Welcome to our September thirteenth pre-meeting. Commissioners, I, you know, I think maybe some of these items are, you know, fairly self-explanatory, but whatever ones you feel like you need some information on, we can just tick down through the list here. So on the Buffalo Run, the change from a single subdivision to a phase one and a phase two, does anybody need any more information on that? All right, the reconstruction of the culinary water tanks. You in a city, this has already been through here once, but their time expired on the previous approval. So they're here again, if I remember correctly, is that right Felix? Commissioners, any information needed on that one?
I, I'm concerned if they're going, how construction affects the flow of track. Just, I know it functions fine right now, but if they need to close any of the roads in that area during construction, it's, it's a big problem because you went to city has closed off our other access to that area. And so is it possible to request that one of their one-way roads become a two-way road during construction? So we don't isolate the community and cause problems?
Sorry, yeah, we're looking at zoning and the conditional use permit, but not necessarily traffic, construction traffic especially.
But if the construction traffic causes a danger to the neighborhood, is that?
That's up to the engineer and the traffic engineer that approves the traffic control plan, not necessarily us when we.
But there is no traffic control plans.
But that comes at the time of construction, they're just.
There is.
And say, didn't it say something about state that they would?
Well, it was. Yes, and they talked about how it wouldn't affect the road long term and all of that. I saw that, but do while they're putting it in, won't they need to close part of those roads? Or are they not planning, they won't inhibit any of the road, the flow of the traffic?
No flow, no flow impedance, they'll just stick to that route that they've designated on the plan.
And sure, there'll be a little bit of an uptick in heavy equipment, probably going in and out of there for whatever the period of time of construction is, but.
But they don't have to close the road.
Also, it's not just, that's detrimental.
Well, it should, if it was investigated, then yes, we fall under that. I just, I'm very familiar with area and right now it's a very difficult area because of the one-way street. And so this is right at the crossroads of any way to get through. It's been, I, I just, I wouldn't want to see this sensitive area become more.
Oh, even if it's not in our, you know, within our scope to recommend that, can we even ask them that? Like, it's a concern.
I believe it could probably be conditioned into it possibly, is that right Charlie?
Yeah, sorry, excuse me, something in my eye. So one of the conditions, one of the standards in the conditional use section of the code is that no material degradation of the roadway may occur, or you can apply conditions so that, sorry, to mitigate material degradation of a roadway. And I think that would easily apply to construction periods. So you could put a condition in there to say, you know, the road won't be closed or remain open for two-way traffic.
That the road needs to be remain open for two-way traffic. Okay.
I bet if you went to a pre-construction meeting, they'd be more happy. As I look at this, it looks like everything's confined to the site. I don't even see where they're tying in a wall down onto that street. So I don't know why it would be other than the construction, since I don't see why it would be pertinent.
Mentioned something about it being that road.
Didn't they says that there will be no increased traffic?
But that wasn't during, so they're talking about the continued use of the, the water tanks are not talking about during the construction period. I didn't see as much like about during the construction because they're going to have to bring in a very large water tank. And they're switching one out and bring in two small ones to replace the larger one.
All being for, it'll be concrete trucks, it's a concrete tank. So they'll demo the, well, they'll leave one from in place.
Right.
They'll build the sack, build another one. Once it's complete, which is a concrete board tank, then they will demo the existing one, the old one, and then put the new one in. From whatever, that, that's one. Says the proposed facility will not increase traffic or inhibit traffic circulation is what it says.
That's just while it's in use, that's not necessarily instruction.
I mean, that's just a statement that's in there, the terminal effects to the zone of RE twenty.
Well, if there, if there is a concern, we can, we can condition it, but I, I don't think that.
An awkward corner, but I think they can get off the street far enough to put all the equipment. But if they had to like pump the concrete from the street and they're blocking the street, I mean, so, but just the condition that the road stay open for two-way traffic would be sufficient in my opinion.
I wouldn't say at least one-way traffic. I mean, sometimes during construction, you can't leave a road.
There's another road they can come for two-way, we've had these one-way. It's a part two.
This ain't gonna fix Bybee Drive.
Then, so I see, I think they can repeat that.
I think it's, I think it's far enough off Bybee Drive here, but it's probably not going to affect it other than the traffic going in and out. But I hate to, to condition it down to the point where where it seems impossible or drives the cost up, you know, it's, I mean, it's, it's inconvenience versus taxpayer money. And so I get the safety factors, but at the same time, I think that, that through the process of, of bidding this, that that's all conditioned into the contracts with the, with the contractor that's going to be doing. So.
Well, it's U N A city, not an incorporated.
U N A city's been working on this for a long time. This tank is very well needed for.
U N City.
For U N A city, but it sits up on the hill that isn't ours, because you know, pressure comes from.
Very well.
So if we're, I don't know that we need to make it a condition as well, but can we just say the friendly recommendation?
If somebody's here that we can just ask them if that's part of it, will someone be here, do you know from U N City?
Yes, we'll have you in here.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Any comments on that item?
Sure, sorry, I had one question on the previous item I forgot to bring up. It mentions a deferral agreement, which can be, I understand they don't want to put the curb gutter and sidewalk in immediately, but it seems that deferral agreements have been abused out West and now we've got charge of what developers should have put in. Is it possible to do escrow or actually have, is there a reason to have to be a deferral agreement instead of actually being?
That's a good point, because now it's going to be within one mile of a school. So I didn't think they could defer it now that it fits in with one mile of a school.
I believe you're talking about Buffalo Run.
Yes, sorry, yes.
So Buffalo Run in net.
I, I think the first one is Buffalo, yeah, Buffalo Run.
So that one refers directly to the, if it's on forty-seven hundred west, correct?
It's just number five for staff recommendations, oh yeah, forty-seven hundred west.
So it's just along that street, so, but the, the curb gutter sidewalk will be moving.
How come they only are going to defer the states portion? Is that something that was conditioned when they got their access approval through UDOT? Because normally UDOT doesn't do deferral agreements.
Yeah.
Good catch. I think normally UDOT also doesn't require or ask for sidewalk to be placed, sidewalk, curb, gutter to be placed on their road. They do?
They did on the one just south of there. They did on everyone that's been installed along there across the frontage, Green's, the church. Or the one just right next to it. Was that little one twenty-two fifty?
Yeah. Curb?
Yeah.
I just asked for them.
No, they curbed out there on the, the radius going into it.
I think we, I think.
I could be wrong.
There could be, I, I know there's asphalt.
If it's not a required, if it's not a requirement of like the county engineer, if he's not mandating a deferral, then I think it can be conditioned that they do, do curb gutter and sidewalk on the forty-seven. Commissioners, you may want to give them a little bit of flexibility. If the drainage system is not pre-conceived along that roadway, we don't know where the grade breaks are and where that water's been drained. So when it comes to curb and gutter, we may want to give them a little bit of flexibility there, ask for it, but maybe carve a way out. If the engineer says it's not necessary yet.
Can we do escrow instead? How long can we wait in escrow?
You can, but the money that you put into escrow, I mean, it just starts losing value almost immediately. So I'd recommend if you want to do escrow to have it installed, if you can get the grade, the way that it needs to be for the drainage of that area. But if not, I mean, there's nothing wrong with asking for sidewalk and then deferring that curb and gutter another time.
But what happens at another time, where does that money come from?
So the deferral agreement gets recorded to the lots in the subdivision. And so you'd be looking at multiple lots in there.
The lot owners are paying out for it instead of developer. And so I just, even if it's a small, if even if the escrow doesn't cover all of it, I think it needs to be escrowed because the developer needs to pay for that, not the lot owners.
I think that's fair, and we've started requiring that on substandard roads as it is. So I think you can ask for that.
No, it, it, just, just to add just a little bit, it seems like that's kind of the process of widening the road. Because a lot of the other subdivisions along forty-seven hundred have had to put in specifically south of this subdivision, all the way over to four thousand south, have had to put in curb and gutter and, oh yeah. And, you know, and widen, they, they put ten, twelve or so feet of asphalt along the curb and gutter. And there is no sidewalk except for by the church there on thirty-three hundred.
As well, is that their sidewalk at twenty-four hundred too?
Okay, well, then that's the sidewalk's kind of hit and miss. Okay, that was on the one side.
I think it's worth, so you could put a condition on there and that condition can be subject to UDOT approval. If UDOT gets in there and says, you know what, we've got big plans here, we don't want this to go in right now, for whatever reason. You know, maybe give them a moment, there's got to be a reason why UDOT hasn't weighed in on whether or not curb and gutter should be required there. And maybe that question wasn't specifically asked.
I, I think that the newer subdivisions that are further south, they've probably done a good job of installing those, this, the one, the subdivision that's right next to this subdivision, I'm a little bit of concern. I mean, a little bit concerned because it almost looks like water is down there is pipe. When you look at it from the end, I, I can almost guarantee you that it's, that it's at a minimum, it's galvanized pipe that's in there, that's probably been in there for fifty or sixty years. So where this asphalt is, it's probably going to have to, you know, be dug up and fixed eventually. And it may not even be sized right under there. However, the precedence is set, you know, it's there, so anyway, okay.
So could we say if not approved by UDOT, it must be escrowed for, or what's the term that we?
I, I don't like the idea of escrow, just for the reason, even.
It comes.
Just because like Charlie said, they could escrow it for today and that sits in there and sits in there. And then in twenty years, they decide to come do it and the cost doubles and the county stuck foot in that.
So number five will just be the developer shall install curb gutter and sidewalk for improvements on forty-seven hundred west and we leave it at that.
Yeah, and then, and then the commission can do what they want with it from that point forward. Yeah, and, and to that point, let's not kid each other, the lot owners are paying for this one way or the other. They're either paying for it now or they're going to pay for it.
Better to pay for it now than in twenty years to get some random.
That's, that's fair. Okay. Anything else? Okay, all right, so anything more on the water tanks in U N A city? The next item is the agritourism application for the Hunt family. Was there any questions or concerns on that one? Okay, I'll take that as a no. What everybody talk at once, all right, next item. Sorry, I was going to take a nap there for a second, but you guys woke me right up. The next item is the phase two of the smart field subdivision. And there were a couple of changes on the drainage there. If Felix, go ahead and address that, so everybody's kind of aware of what happened there.
So, so the last time we met, we discussed the possibility of doing low-impact design. And that was something that we took back to the developer. It's not more their responsibility to get with the county engineer and talk about what's the potential in this area for low-impact development instead of, instead of having that retention base. So what they came to was a, I think a reasonable solution was to remove that retention pond from that large lot around the north that lot two point two. Expand the size of the detention pond on the south side. And we also had then in this particular location, the county engineers does not recommend low-impact design because of the high water. And, and so in the, in looking through the road widths and things, we also pinpointed that sixteen hundred South Street should be sixty-six feet wide. So that's, those are the, those are the three things we mainly changed.
What street was that, sorry?
Sixteen hundred.
Six hundred.
And, and so the, the, that's kind of what they did, they, they made those changes and they resubmitted the flat and the civil plan.
And then to the drainage concern, they're going to pipe and correct me if I'm wrong Felix, but they're going to run a pipe from the detention pond that's in lot two oh eight down through some other property until it runs into a natural drainage or slough that's a little bit further west of this subdivision. That's right, yeah. All right, any other questions or concerns on that item commissioners?
We need to make that a condition. They will complete that drainage pipe all the way to the Walker Slough.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a good idea.
I mean, that's after visiting with Gary, that's, you know, their recommendation of allowing this that way was making sure that gets put in. So I think it would be better if we put that in a condition of our approval that that drainage line runs all the way down.
And in the future, we spoke of this in the, the chair vice chair meeting on Monday, on yesterday. And in the future, you know, hopefully working together with, with engineering, got to come up with a way that there's a chain of these detention ponds that are larger, that these developers can, can use rather than having one of these unsightly messes in the future in every subdivision that's going in.
Because it's, we visited about that, I mean, this would be the perfect location to do it. Because you could put it down by the slough, you've got phase one, which already has drainage issues. When they brought phase one and remember where those basins were kind of half in the lot and stretching along there. And this would be a, a prime opportunity for the county to do something like that.
So, and especially where this one runs down to Walker Slough like it does, because that's going to be where, where the drainage goes. It's where it naturally drains now, and so that's going to be where, you know, would make sense to engineer it. That's something for future, but hopefully we can get to those kinds of things.
It's Walker Slough that it, that it needs to be drained to.
I'm pretty sure it's Walker Slough, I was trying to remember the name of that, so I'm glad you said that, because that seems right to me. Okay. Any other concerns or questions on that item? Okay, next item is the property of nineteen forty-one South Fifty-One Hundred West. Mr. Opelados had this application in before us. Previously, the item was tabled waiting for the new general plan to be completed and approved. That's done now, so it's, it's in front of us again, but I know that, you know, the, that he's been in here on at least two previously looked two previous times, maybe three, so. Let's get some, let's get some new information on that. I know you were going to maybe reach out to him. Stephen, I don't know if you had a chance to do that, or if you, if you got a response or anything.
I did call him, I wasn't, I wasn't able to get ahold of him in my call. So just to give you a little bit of background, this was before you, a request for a, a, a rezone to C three was before the Western Weaver Planning Commission back in March. And the planning commission tabled the decision until the, until the Western Weaver general plan was updated and finalized. As you know, that has happened, and so they've requested to be back on your agenda for you to consider the rezoning the property from A two to C three. Now, originally there was going to be, there was a plan to have a company that had some the insulated infrastructure pipe, and they were going to, they wanted to store that equipment onsite and be able to do sales out of, out of that. I think they also want to do like contractor equipment rentals out of that. As I just said, you, you tabled it, wait until the general plan's done, see where this goes. General plan right now shows this area as office slash tech. General plan isn't really specific about what that is, in fact, it doesn't define office tech at all. And it allows the legislative body, I think a little bit of the Widdo room to define really what that means. As staff, we think that you could make office tech work out of C three if you're, if the developer's willing to restrict the uses to like warehousing and business offices. But that's, that's our recommendation, you could, you could allow the county commission to further restrict those uses, or you could make your recommendation be what I've outlined in my report, or you could come up with a new recommendation to the county commissioners. That's what the developers ultimately looking for from me tonight is a recommendation to the county commissioners. We've already held a public hearing on this, so there's not a need to do another one, so this won't be a public hearing. It's just for you to, to consider and potentially make a, a decision.
Chair, may I? Yes. My concern is we just adopted this general plan. This general plan states office tech, we had a lot of discussion on this area. That was kind of the advice, I guess, of the county commission to go down office tech. I feel we won't be doing, I mean, as much work as we put into that general plan and it was adopted less than a month ago. And we come in here now and we make a deviation to the general plan and allow C three in an area that says office tech. I, I don't feel comfortable about that. I, I think we have two options here, Steve, help me, correct me if I'm wrong, but we can either table it again and come up with a definition of what office text tech means. That was one of the requests that I made when I made the motion to adopt the general plan is that we make sure the code fits what we just put out there so that we're not put in this situation. So, but I will, I, I would not support this going to C three based on what we just adopted in the general plan.
That being said, Commissioner Edwards, you said two options, one would be to table, the other you're thinking recommend.
Denial based on that, that's the, that's a, that's the only thing I feel comfortable with.
My thoughts on office tech are, it's, it's, it's kind of a holding corral, if you will. And, and I think that, that a lot of the areas that got put into the office tech are to be determined. Maybe that's a better definition for it is TBD. So I, I don't think, I don't think that holding things up based on the fact that we just did the general plan, that, that's not exactly the way that I, you know, prefer to go. I think that, I think that he deserves some sort of a decision on this tonight. He's been in here in the course of the last six months and actually probably closer to a year, I, I would presume. Trying to deal with this, with this item. So in that regard, whether, whether we want to have further conversation about what office tech is or, or give a decision and how we get to that decision. You know, we'll get to that in the conversation as, as we get to it in the meeting. But I don't necessarily have a problem in changing that from office tech. If it was set into a different, into a different zone, yeah, okay, there's, there's more room for debate. But, but I think that the office tech really gives us a kind of a TBD factor there because of the, not just this property, but we knew this one was coming back to us quicker than any of the rest of them would be. Charlie, can you lend any, any guidance or, or, you know, kind of your, your thoughts on this, please?
I'd be happy to, before I do so, Steve, did you happen to get in the packet what the, the new plan says about office and tech? My search of the plan just showed office tech as that one spot, I didn't see any more specifics when I did a search of it. Me, let me read to you guys what office tech is. Just the, just general description of what that is in the plan. Business tech and innovation parks where land uses rarely occur outdoors are generally a low intrusive use on their neighbors as long as traffic impacts and site design, architecture, landscaping are addressed to provide a pleasant and harmonious built environment. A business or tech park can provide significant contributions toward onsite public recreation and green space investments that can tie adjoining land uses or neighborhoods together through the park's campus. So that was what was intended behind that, that brown land use that's on the, on the map and a few different locations. When we were rounding the corner at the, the last little bit, we, you know, trying to figure out what exactly we're going to do on this particular property, how to, how to tie it in, so it's not just an island of, of use that's different than the uses around it. But as also that area between the Little Weaver River and the Weaver River, just north of Twelfth Street or nine hundred south, it was a little bit of a debate, trying to figure out exactly what this should be. You know, that area between the river and the Little Weaver was for a little bit slated as light manufacturing. And there was a little bit of back and forth with the commission and ultimately what the direction we received from the commissioners and after discussing this with you guys was to color this area brown for office tech and then modify what office and tech in the code essentially says, which is just kind of setting up an expectation that it's kind of that hybrid between it's that low intrusive, heavy commercial or that low intrusive, light manufacturing, all that. The, the uses that might make it otherwise intrusive as manufacturer would all be on the inside of the building essentially. And you just wouldn't be impacted by it if you were one of the neighbors, other than just the appearance of, of it being some kind of a non-residential, for example, use. The intention is, was so that the commissioners can have some flexibility on moving on this project as well as on the project between the river a little bit more quickly, if possible, without just saying anything in the M one zone, for example, is allowed or should be allowed, or anything in the C three zone is or should be allowed. Coloring at this gives the, a better expectation for the neighbors to know that it's not going to be residential. It's probably going to be something a little closer to commercial, but something a little more neighborhood friendly commercial. And it gives the county commission the opportunity essentially to allow these landowners to do what it is they want to do without opening the door for future landowners to essentially put the heaviest and most intense use there. So that, I think that's the intention of how the color got on the map, at the way it got.
As I see it, I think this would be the perfect opportunity to use that. And the reason I say that is Mr. Opelado surrounded by Marshall on three sides. And so it'd be kind of a good bridge so that he could move forward and a good bridge to use flexibility that we do. I tend to agree with that, actually. It, it's one of those things that just is kind of sitting there and on a bigger scope of things, as the smaller the lots get, I'm going to deviate just a little bit, people need to have places to put stuff. We have a lot of stuff in Weaver County, a lot of stuff. And so I think it does give us an opportunity to look at using something like this for if it's indoors, if it's properly fenced and gated, I don't see a problem with it at all. I think it's just something that's in, in between the M and the C three and the heavy, I think it's just a good fit, actually.
So just a question to that, so would we go through and list all the uses? Because when you look at all the permitted uses in C three and all the stuff that it potentially opens the door to, that's what concerns me. So we would all, I guess I could support it if we did it through a whether a master development agreement that states out what permitted uses could be there. I could support it, but I almost wouldn't say we'd have to go through every one of those uses one by one and say yes or no.
I, I kind of think that's what we decided at the end, that the we went along, we'd decide what they were. we went along, we decide what they were. And that, well, we left it.
That's, that's, that's what I remember. Yeah. For that point, as long as there's nothing wrong with putting, putting this condition to a, to a master development agreement so that in case the use that it's been proposed for is changing. That's not going to be a problem. Is, is that a possibility, a potential?
That's already in both of my recommendations to both options.
Okay.
And that's pretty routine. The county actually has a routine development agreement that says if, uh, for whatever reason, the use changes, expires, uh, uh, or is abandoned, uh, the zone reverts to what the previous zone was. And so we can always put that in there. And if they want to do something different, they got to come back and ask the same question or on a new use.
For those of you that were here during the public hearing, what was the, the general comments from the public if in?
None.
Nothing?
No one, no one was.
Not too many people's butt lots that are backing this now. It's just barely a brand new subdivision.
Right.
So, and Penea is three other sides.
Well, and then, and then bear in mind that where this is at, there's also, you know, potentially going to be an extension of fifty one hundred west coming, uh, through that block. So there's, you know, probably at some point in time going to be a a road barrier, for lack of a better term, there. So.
That's something that needs to be listed as a condition as well. If it does move forward, that fifty one hundred be installed through that portion.
It's, it's got to be addressed.
Yep.
Yeah, the road's got to be addressed. Okay, commissioners, anything else on that one? Liam, I'm going to ask you a question. Um, is it okay to, to postpone the meeting for a few minutes so that we can finish the, the pre-meeting or do we need to start on time?
Oh, we do need to start on time. It's been noticed the start of five. So if we can do a five.
Well, i- if we get into the next item, we're going to, we're going to get stuck there and we're already, I believe, beyond five. So with, on that note, we'll go ahead and, and begin our meeting. From everybody to the Weaver County, uh, Planning Commission meeting for September thirteenth. And, uh, if you'd please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Thanks, Commissioner Claus for not blocking the flag. Ah, levity.
Okay.
Everyone is present in the counted for. And it looks like, uh, our minutes, I didn't see anything in the minutes that, uh, out of reason. So commissioners.
I didn't know if I was saying, you know, make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Have a motion. I'll ask for a second. Motion and a second, all in favor of approval of the, uh, minutes from August ninth? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the minutes have been passed. All right. Our first item on the agenda, Mr. Greg Sigmiller, representing Hooper Irrigation. Give us a little presentation.
Thank you. Appreciate the, uh, opportunity to talk to you guys tonight. Um, this presentation that I'm going to share with you, I've been told I've got about fifteen, twenty minutes total, but I, I don't know if it'll take that long. I guess you have a lot of questions. Um, it was a presentation given to the, um, to the commissioners, some of the commissioners before. And, uh, it was suggested that this information be given to you as a planning commission as well, just so you know what Hooper Irrigation kind of has in mind for their future. And, uh, as how that relates to the future of the West Weaver area. So thank you for the opportunity to bring this to you tonight. Um, if you could advance the next slide, I'd appreciate it. This slide right here shows basically the Hooper Irrigation Service area. So on the north, it's the Weaver River, be right there on the, on the left-hand side of what you see on the screen. On the east, it's pretty much the Hooper Canal. Um, which kind of goes that way, a- about halfway through the valley between I fifteen and the lake, pretty salt lake area. So all of that in yellow is what has historically been serviced. I'll be through, through flood irrigation since the eighteen fifties when the Hooper Canal was started a long, long time ago. Um, the purple areas, uh, look like little, uh, I don't know, my grandsons are into the, uh, the little computer games with the little blocks. But anyway, it looks like some of those little characters. Um, those purple areas are what currently Hooper Irrigation is pressurizing. So in essence, the yellow areas are becoming purple because we're shifting as society from flood irrigation more so to pressure, as, as farmland, uh, turns into residential land. The, uh, those areas are, are getting, the purple areas are getting bigger. Um, the Hooper system there was installed in two thousand. The Taylor system, the, the one there in the middle was installed in two thousand nine. Here we are a decade plus later. And we are looking at expanding to what we call the proposed West Weaver area, which of course falls under your jurisdiction as a planning commission. The others, of course, are, are more so, well, some of that Taylor is in your jurisdiction as well, but some of it overlaps into the city. Hooper is pretty much exclusively Hooper City. With a little bit into the county as well. So the little red box is, is an area that we took a look at and said, okay, this is where we're going to get started. This is where most of the density is. This is where people are wanting to develop. Uh, we have a couple of canals that go through that area. The blue squittle lines, of course, are, are major canals. We go through there, there are minor canals after that, but they're all private. But these are the, the, um, the Hooper Irrigation Company canal is showing in the room. Um, the next slide, we'll, we'll kind of zoom in on that proposed West Weaver and I apologize, it turns it ninety degrees. So it makes it a little bit confusing. So on that, on that figure, there along the bottom of it is 12th Street. And, um, so our canal snakes through the middle of that, along the north there to the east side is the Weaver River. Um, and then of course, across the, the, the left-hand side is just a, a boundary along the west side of forty seven hundred west. Um, we took a look at that. We thought, hey, this is going to go. So we, we've overlaid some pipes around the perimeter and, um, and then just started to see what it would take to put a pressurized system in there. The reservoirs need to be at the same elevation as the canals. And so uh, that works out pretty well. The land's flattened up out here, but you can see that eighteen acre foot reservoir that, that we're working, we have an agreement with River, River Band. And, uh, you know, they're, they're helping us actually get this thing initiated in the area. The service area that we're looking at is, is that area shown in yellow around there, noted by the, the little tag service area. And then we have some of these major transmission pipes. Those would be twelve inch or, or greater, um, that, that basically loop around. Everything else inside of that would usually be an eight inch pipe. Um, that, that would service the, the subdivisions in that area. Um, on the next slide, we show some of the developments that Hooper Irrigation has been working with. Uh, you would probably recognize quite a few of them. Um, some of them are, are various stages of, of involvement. Some, you know, they've just expressed an interest. Others, we are actually under construction with um, River Band, like I said before, right there in, in the center. And they're close to the property that, that we're, that we have for putting our reservoir. And, uh, yeah, there you go. Um, that's where the reservoir is going to be. I don't think I'll take the time to tell you the other ones out there. Like you say, you're probably familiar with, with all of them. Our hope is to build the, this backbone system with the reservoirs, the pumps, uh, the pipes and getting that going. We're Hooper Irrigation, as you can tell, is large enough that we have to put in meters nowadays in the state legislature requirement. Um, we, we put our systems in at a little bit higher standard than, than others would, would like. The, our PVC pipes are a little thicker than your, your regular PVC that the farmers would like to put in. Um, we're, we're built to last a little bit longer because we want to be here. Uh, we've been here since the eighteen fifties. We're just shifting the, the way we deliver water. And we want to continue to be here, uh, longer to the future. Um, the next slide actually just shows where, what the reservoir is looking like as we work towards that. In the past, the other two systems were basically built with a loan from the Board of Water Resources, um, that takes a good thirty years to pay off. Um, this one, what we would like to do is, is get the backbone built. And then as development comes along, we use those fees, we can call impact fees because we're not in public. We'll use those fees that, that people buy into our system and we'll build the reservoir, the pumps, the pipes. As demand, um, comes along, which means there'd be some interim pumps and different things that will help people to get going. Um, our intent is to, uh, try and help Taylor West Weaver Water with their requirement, put second or culinary water to these homes. And, uh, they can't do that if, if, if there's any concern with some of that precious culinary water used to, to water gardens. And so that's why Hooper Irrigation Company becomes critical. Here in the west, that's, that's just the way it is. You, you have to have a secondary water system. You can have a culinary water system. And so, you know, a lot of those laws and rules apply to secondary, as they do culinary. Basically, that's in a nutshell, what we have in mind. There's a couple of things that we would ask of you as a, as a planning commissioner, as we saw our boundary. We would ask your help in, in making sure that developers, um, are aware that we have secondary water systems and that they're aware that for the most part, their land has probably been irrigated with Hooper Irrigation water since the dawn of time, right? And, um, and so, you know, directing our direction would be very helpful. Just be, because there's a lot of work to start up a new system. And we're already there. There's no sense to just send our direction. So number one, we, we ask your help in making sure that that people are aware that we're here to serve with secondary water. And then number two, uh, kind of on a side note, that Weaver County has kind of, um, started a park district. Any property that's done, that's developed within that boundary, we'll have to have shares of some type. It's usually about one acre per acre. And so if there is going to be a park, whether it's a private park or Weaver County Park or something, they need to start looking into getting shares. So as the county kind of moves that way, as you have opportunities of securing lands for parks and such, make sure that shares are associated with them. Otherwise, it's, it's a very difficult thing to find shares and hide them, especially right now. There's so much going on up there. So kind of keep that tucked, tucked away in the back of your heads that, that, um, you, you remember water shares from Hooper Irrigation. We, we've also allowed those irrigation shares to use to some extent. And, uh, but if you can kind of keep those two things in mind as you work with the development here. So I turn that back to you to any questions?
I, I have a question. Do you anticipate, or, you know, does Hooper anticipate that the areas that are not irrigated now will, that there will be enough water when it's pressurized and more efficient? And you're metering it? That those areas within, within the Hooper jurisdiction, so to speak, would be able to, to have water to those subdivisions where they historically have not had water? Because there are some pockets.
Yeah, there are. There's, there's actually quite a few pockets. I think a lot of the answer to that question is going to depend a lot on the state engineer. Um, state engineers allocation right now, if you look that up and they say, okay, you've got to have so many acre feet per acre of water that goes on this land over and forward and can sustain that kind of use. And so if the state engineer kind of backs, I don't know, backs off probably isn't the right phrase, but if they lighten those requirements a little bit because of efficiency issues, then that opens up the door for other lands that can be developed. Right now, we kind of shoot for around three acre feet per acre, which is what the state division of, of water rights is allocated. Weber Basin has shown that they can irrigate, uh, land a little more efficiently. And so they kind of use a, a different number that's a little bit lower than that. They've never been called to task by the, by the state engineers office for that. And, uh, I, I think with drought and with efficiency, I don't think we ever will be called to task. The, um, Pineview Water also shows that a number of them are less than, than that version of the state engineer's office. Hooper Irrigation uses what the state engineer does until, you know, we're, we're, we're bigger and a lot bigger. Better control on whatever things.
Seems like there should be a different number for residential and commercial uses versus ag. I mean, you know, and especially on gravity, gravity irrigation versus pressurized sprinkler.
You know, this, with this drought, we, we, uh, we're finding, we're finding the barriers on a lot of different things and testing a lot of those barriers. Can we do more, more with less was kind of the question. And I think, um, development's kind of pushing that envelope. The, the drought's pushing that envelope. Um, and so, yeah, I, I think you're right. There's, there's some things that can be.
Well, the question always comes on these pockets where there's no water. These, these folk, these developers are in a scramble to find water. Well, you know, supply and demand has the cost of that water very high and very minimal through these, these high development phases of the economy. So that's to be, there's going to have to be some planning for that, whether it's going to be covered you know, with irrigation and then the requirement, uh, on the landscaping, you know, would follow along those lines. Or are we going to plan for everything to be zero scape or even less than zero scape? Because zero scape does require some water. And then that becomes the debate between secondary water and culinary water. So that's, that's why I asked the question. So I'm hoping that, you know, in the future, and especially with this drought, we can kind of start dressing those, you know, get the, the, uh, the state, uh, government cog of, you know, water conservancy. Looking at those kinds of things because we do get a lot of requests, which you're, you're aware of those too, because, you know, those folks come and see, come and see Hooper Irrigation as well. So anyway, I, I think that was everything that I wanted to ask. Commissioners, any other questions or comments?
I appreciate the presentation. Thanks, Greg.
Well, thank you very much.
Listen, if you have any other questions.
All right. Thanks for the presentation. Thank you. Okay. Next item on our agenda is, uh, applications in public hearing. Uh, item number three is an item. LVB eleven oh nine twenty one, consideration and action on a request for approval of Buffalo Run subdivision phasing plan. The subdivision is located at twenty four hundred south, forty seven hundred west.
Chair, I just got a question.
Sure.
Do we need to pull this off from consent to administrative if we're going to discuss it?
Charlie, if you don't mind, I, I would say if you're going to, if it's going to be a discussion, then yeah, absolutely. I would put a letter as administrative.
I'd like to make a request that we pull item number three and move it down to administrative item and remove it from consent.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second for that item?
Second.
Have a motion second. We have to do a roll call or, okay. All in favor of moving, uh, item three to applicant, where are we going to move it to? To, oh, petition, uh, to, uh, under the administrative items? All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. So are we going to make that our first item under? Okay. So we'll start with that item again. Are we? We'll just, we'll just continue to call it LVB eleven oh nine twenty one as described previously. All right. Felix, you want to give us a presentation on that?
Yes. So this is a, um, an eighteen lot subdivision. And what they're looking to do is, is, uh, split it into two phases. So they want to split it in half. The, the request comes after, uh, the developer, uh, who's not a developer by trade, realized the cost of development. And in order to make it feasible and affordable for him, he's, he's asked to do it in this, in this manner. Mr. Jim Marsell, you know, it's a trucking company. And, uh, so yeah, they, they would, would just split it up into two phases, nine lots each. And, uh, if prior to even getting before the planning commission to ask for this, he, he met with the planning division and also the engineering department here at the county, make sure that it was okay. And we saw, we saw that this is a good opportunity with, to let this developer, uh, continue in, in, in this plan.
My, my concern with this, and it's not really a big concern, but, but my, my opinion is I don't have a problem with it. But I don't want the second phase to become a weed patch and a place to park trucks and junk. So as long as it's maintained and kept up. So as long as it's maintained and kept up, kept presentable. You know, I don't, I don't want there to be a road that comes halfway down the subdivision and ends, and then that makes a good place for, you know. Things to get ugly, literally. Commissioners?
I don't have a problem with phasing plan at all. My concern is that I don't like the deferral agreement. One forty seven hundred west. I think if curb and gutter is going in within the subdivision, the whole entire subdivision needs to be placed with curb gutter. Sidewalk. So that's the only condition, that's the only thing that I don't. That I have an issue with.
Commissioners, anything else?
Thanks, Commissioner Rickman, for pointing that out, too.
I agree with.
I also agree with that.
So on that note. I'll ask for a motion. Chair, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the Buffalo Run subdivision phasing plan. That would create two-phase development. The proposal creates nineteen eighteen residential lots in total. Uh, this recommendation is based on the following condition. Each phase improvements are complete or guaranteed financially before each phase is recorded. The developer enters into a monument improvement agreement with the county surveyor's office for each phase. A signature block for Taylor West Weaver Water District is added to the dedication plat. All Hooper irrigation conditions of approval are satisfied. And this is where I'd like to kind of change that fifth recommendation a little bit. The developer shall install curb gutter and sidewalk improvements along forty seven hundred west to match the. Rest of the improvements and within the subdivision. This recommendation is based on the following findings, a proposed subdivision conforms with the West Central Weaver General Plan. The proposed subdivision complies with applicable county codes and the subdivision conforms with zoning and subdivision ordinances. Very good. I'll ask for a second to that motion.
I'll second it.
Have a motion in a second. Commissioner Clontz?
Hi, I'm good with it. What do you want me to say?
It's either an I or an A.
An I.
All right. Sorry, didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Aye.
Aye. Novell, Commissioner Novell. Commissioner McCormick. Sir Edwards. Commissioner Rickman. Oh, motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, item four point one, C U P twenty twenty dash. A request for approval of a conditional use permit to reconstruct a culinary water tank that serves U N A city. Mister Felix, it's up to you again.
Yes, so thank you. This is a conditional use permit request. And the, what they're looking to do is is start construction on uh replacing an old water tank. That is at this location. Uh, they, they've included with their plan detailed engineer drawings. But also included state approval for this uh this reconstruction. Um, the proposal includes the. Placement of two new thirty, three hundred and seventy five thousand gallon tanks. And a construction of a new gravel road at the turnaround. I'll walk through these slides and I've also included the engineer plans with them. Here, uh located in the R E twenty zone, uh the standards that uh to consider tonight. Are the. Traffic and safety and congestion. Infrastructure and amenities and services, uh the environment. Uh, current qualities and characteristics of the surrounding area, compliance with the intent of the general plan. Performance, present and future. Uh, in general, any other general standards that you would like to apply to this? And um if there happens to be uh standards that you propose. Uh, or conditions that you propose, there may be some voluntary contributions. Some some variables that you could accept from the applicant or from the engineer. Here is the the plans we can work through these. Uh, we've got the project location here in the U N T Highlands area, right off of Bybee Drive. And here we also have the the truck route map. So the, the Weber County has coordinated a truck route for this project. Material taken to and from the site will need to follow this route. So you have, I don't know, let me see if I can zoom in a little bit. Sorry for the poor qualities, but so you have a skyline drive onto Eastwood Boulevard. And then straight onto Bybee Drive. So here's the existing old tank. Um, it's at it's at a state where it needs to be repaired. They've, they've been, this has been in the works for a couple of years now. And they've, they've gone through. They've actually went through the conditional use permit. Couple of years ago, but they, due to the conditional sperm expiring, they've come back to. To um to reinstate that, that approval. There's an image showing the new tank location. Some um some cross sections showing tank location, final grade. In green. These are details showing connections and water lines and some things. There's one slide in particular I'd like to bring to your attention. Uh, due to the, the the fact that this is kind of in the heart of the residential area right on Bybee. It was requested by the county commission that we send out public notice by mail. So I did, I did that a couple of weeks ago, prior to the meeting. I did get one phone call um from uh the neighbor just to the north of the site. Yeah, the Spring Creek State Subdivision number one there. Uh, his concern was the site appearance after following construction. He wanted to make sure that the slope was stabilized correctly and also that there's revegetation. That would take place. And both of those are were confirmed by the engineer, Matt Harpixon. That there will be some vegetation taking place.
Our engineering play a role in. Not necessarily the construction, but you know, those kind of things, they go up there and inspect that to make sure, you know, kind of phases. The landscape, you know, prior to landscaping, of course, as well, but you know, the landscaping, that kind of stuff does get done.
Yeah, heavily involved throughout the process. I'll skip through some of these, but I'd be happy to go back if I need to. Uh, just wanted to point out some of the slope stabilization measures that are taking place. These come after recommendations from geologic and geotechnical professionals. Uh, so these plans have been designed in accordance with with geologic and geotechnical recommendations. Here is showing the. Type of stabilization material that we will be placed on the slope. Other than getting too much into the weeds. We have some details regarding site preparation and seeding. Anchor trench materials. Stuff that I'm not an engineer, but if there are questions that are uh very specific, we we could always ask uh Matt Harpixon. And that is the last slot, that is, yes. So with that. The staff's recommendation. But staff does recommend approval of this proposal. And there are. Conditions in the report. Regarding. Bybee Drive. The impacts that will take place and damages that will take place to Bybee Drive, that they be repaired by. By the uh the developer. Let me go to the. My report and I can look through my. My recommendations. Just let me share my, reshare. So the applicant is responsible to maintain the site, the visual appearance and erosion control. Project shall adhere to all state and county ordinances. The development of the site must comply with all recommendations outlined in geologic and geotechnical studies. And the fourth one is the applicant document their impact on Bybee Drive. And the private access seasonings that is shared with nearby residential owners. The lot will be required to repair any damages to Bybee Drive. And the private access seasonings that are caused by construction of the water tanks before receiving final inspection. The owner will need to verify with planning office that all damages to Bybee Drive and private access. That's recommendations based on the findings listed in the report.
Commissioners, questions for staff?
I just had the one question for the engineer.
Sure. No, I think you're, you're good to go. Give us your name and the city you live in further.
Uh, my name is Matt Harpixon. I live in Syracuse, Utah.
Yes, so I see that there is. Traffic, uh, traffic study, I guess, or the traffic analysis based on. The um after the water tanks are installed. My only concern was whether Bybee would need to be closed off during construction at any point.
Yeah, we talked uh about that and it's in in the plans not to close Bybee Drive. Now, there might be some temporary closures uh while they make water line connection or something like that. Right now, all of the connections are off, off of Bybee Drive, so we don't anticipate Bybee Drive being closed down. But it just depends on on construction. If if they need to close down the road to make a waterline connection because things aren't shown, aren't in the weather. If something's different out of it.
All maps are right, come on.
It, I mean, the idea is just that we won't have to close the road down based on the construction. And we made a point in the construction drawing. Investigation, home park vehicles, so on Bybee Drive, we just wanted to keep that road open and clear. But there will be trucks going in and out, and when the trucks are backing, you know, down the road or whatever they have to do to turn. Then it might be a truck.
So I bring that up just because I'm sure you're familiar with the area. If Bybee Road closes, there's a whole section that's very isolated because of the one-way road. Um, to the other side, is it possible that um I my recommendation I'd like to make is that if Bybee Road closes. Then we do need to allow two-way traffic on Comby Road during that time, so that we don't um. Cause a huge issue for the residents in that area.
Yeah, that would, that would, the approval for that would have to come from the city, uh, from the city council. But uh, I, that makes sense to me. We don't anticipate closing the road then. If if it is, if traffic is stopped, it should only be stopped momentarily while the truck is. Turning around, making, you know, so they can head back the other direction, direction they came. It's a narrow road, Bybee Drive is, Comby Road's even more narrow.
Okay, um, I guess we can make the recommendation. To make, to make it possible. How long do you expect construction to take?
We were giving the contract for a full year, so this time next year they would be finishing.
Okay. I think those are my questions.
Commissioners, anything else? All right, thank you very much. Anything else for staff? Okay, all right, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Perfect.
All right, um, we recommend the planning. Uh, that we recommend approval of file C U P twenty twenty two dash ten. Request for approval of a conditional use permit to remove an old water tank and build two new thirty, um, three thousand seven. Hundred, five thousand gallon water tanks. This recommendation for approval is subject to all review agency requirements and with the following conditions. And I'll just state the four conditions as in our packet. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
And this recommendation, um, within one additional uh recommendation. That if Bybee Drive is closed at any point, that an alternate route on Comby Road be made available to residents. Um, this recommendation is based on the following findings found in our packet.
Perfect.
Explain to a manager motion, just on that fifth recommendation, I mean, I think, could we? Put in there clothes for, you know, over a certain amount of time. I mean, like you said, there'll be some intermittent closure, but. You know, if they had to do a tie-in and they closed it for five hours, you know. Would that be acceptable without, because it'd take quite a bit to make Comby a two-way street, I think.
It would probably require there to. Or we can. Discussion.
That's fine, you haven't finished it exactly yet.
Yeah, I haven't asked for motion, so. Or excuse me a second.
Some sort of route.
So do you want, I guess, do you want to put a time on it, like if it's going to be closed for a day or if it's going to be closed for a matter of hours? I mean, your recommendation.
That's what I'm, yeah, I'll support an amount of time, but I I I won't support just. That, because like I said, they'll, they could run into unforeseen things and like you mentioned, maps aren't always correct. And if the line's not in the right spot and they've got it dug up and water shut off to the entire city of U N A. I think that's a greater safety concern than what that Bybee Drive might be. So I mean, we tell them if you're gonna close it for longer than twelve hours, yeah, I think they need to look at an alternate way for them, but anything less. It it, I I think that, you know, with proper noticing, I think they can make do. I would support that as well. But if they go in there with the plan to start working and they find that, I mean, you know, hopefully they would notice prior. Because, so this, this is a big impact to the city. Drinking water system.
Immediately, something like that.
May I make a comment? Would it not be safe to assume that they would be doing that anyways? I mean, it would pose a hazard for safety if an emergency vehicle couldn't get into that area as well. So I would assume that's kind of covered under the safety.
Not explicitly. I mean, it's kind of a hazard right now that's been allowed to continue. Makes me concerned that they're not aware of it.
Well, under, under normal circumstances, if it had to be closed, if it wasn't an emergency, so let's just say, so let's put a time to that. Less than twelve hours, more than twelve hours is a day. You know, I mean, that's kind of.
I'd support twelve hours of proper noticing.
Okay. Then, so the fifth recommendation would be, um. Let's see, if Bybee Drive needs to be closed for longer than twelve hours, then proper noticing and an alternate route. Um, along the one-way section of Comby Road must be provided. Any other thoughts before we go?
That's important.
All right, I have finished.
Any more comments? Okay. On that note, I'll ask for a second, second chair, have a motion in a second. Commissioner Andrea.
Hi.
Commissioner McCormick. Commissioner Wickern.
Hi.
Commissioner Clance.
Hi.
Commissioner Neville.
Hi.
Commissioner Edwards.
Hi.
Chair votes aye as well. Motion passes.
Thank, I just make one comment, Chair.
Certainly.
So the, I followed this project for quite a while. I know it's been out there and they've been trying to get funding. I'm glad they finally secured funding and. Councilwoman Christie Bell did a ton of work for the area up there and getting this put together, so. I just want to. Tell her thanks because it does make a big difference to those residents down in there, so. Great. She had to go in front of legislature. You had to go in front of a lot of it with this project, so I'm glad you finally got your funding to move forward with it.
Alright. She's actually in the audience. For those of us that don't know her. Thanks for your efforts. I'm sure your citizens there appreciate it very much because they probably like to drink water once in a while. Alright. Item number four point two, CPU twenty twenty-two dash twelve, consideration and action on a conditional use permit for the Hunt Family Farm agritourism agriculture. Little operation. How was that for a bad say?
Yes. Yeah, agritourism in Western Weber. Um, it's a good opportunity for these farmers to uh bring in some extra income. Uh, during these holiday seasons. In this particular instance, they're looking to, oh, start operations. Uh, pretty soon here, within a couple of weeks or so, so the. The, the plan for. For Mister. Um, Mister Hunt. Mister and Mrs. Hunt. Uh, Matthew and London Hunt. Uh, is to. Create an agritourism operation. Within a twenty-one acre agricultural parcel. Uh, the, the location is thirty-four eighty-three north, thirty-nine hundred west. And you can see on this aerial. General location there. On the north side of the incorporated area. And. What they're looking to do. Uh, the initial operations will begin with a corn maze. Starting this fall. They'll also have. A. So the corn maze, a pumpkin patch. A courtyard with slides and swings. And. An entertainment area. Seating and music. Petting zoo. Concession area for food and drinks. Fire barrels. And parking area. Ticket booth. See here, hours of operation. They have, uh. Their intent is to operate. The fall, uh, starting this year. Uh, mid-September through October thirty-first. Uh, from four to ten, Monday through Friday. On Saturday, ten AM to ten PM, close Sunday. They're, they're also looking to. Uh, conduct winter operations. Which is a little bit unique. They would like to have like a Santa and sleigh. And those would start December first to February twenty-eighth. Monday through Friday, three to nine PM. Saturday, ten AM to ten PM, close Sunday. And in the springtime. They would like to operate. March, April, May, Monday through Friday. Four PM to ten PM. Saturday, ten AM to ten PM and close Sunday. So. There, they've included. With their plan. A parking. Parking plan and. I want to go back to my slide here. So. Most first or. Here. That's where the parking area will be. And you'll have the corn maze. The entrance to the parking area is just right here. There will also be. Similar with all conditioner, conditional use reviews. Some of the standards we could consider. Considered are these listed here, traffic. So to see amenities environment. And. Here's the, the list of, here's the narrative that was included with their. Their proposal. As you can see, it starts off with their. Fall activities. And then. And if you look further along, you'll see plans for use of property during additional seasons. Winter festival, with Santa Claus and reindeer, sleigh rides and ice skating. And the spring, you have baby on the bay, then a community garden and flower festival. Uh, here's their site plan. They, they intend to have some lighting. There the safety lighting. And we've also, you know, got comments from the fire district. Regarding their activity. There's. For this season, the fire district is okay with them conducting. The, 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 the business. Without additional requirements, but starting next year. The fire, the fire district, the fire marshal would like them to, to, uh, to revisit the, um. Potential for replacing a fire hydrant. Um. Those, those details are included in my report. If I need to refer back to them, if there are questions specific to that, I can go back. And looking at the, this is the sign that they plan to use on the property. Five to eight. And. I think what I'll do. Is go to my conclusions and recommendations and. We will. Book me that for questions if you have any. So. With that, Planning Division recommends approval of this Hunt, Hunt Family Farms agritourism operation. Uh, with the conditions stated in the report, condition one. All the requirements from the Weaver Morgan Health Department are satisfied. All fire district requirements are satisfied for the two thousand twenty-three season. After the two thousand twenty-three season, the owner will be required to have permanent fire safety solution. Or the condition of this permit will be revoked. The, uh, condition number three, a farm stay and development agreement are entered into before commercial operations may begin. And. Our recommendation is based on the findings stated in the staff report. And that concludes.
Thank you, Felix. Commissioners, any? Comments or concerns on this one? Questions?
I have a comment.
Hi.
I feel like the, um, our community has been really thoughtful as far as. They want us to maintain the agricultural atmosphere within Western River County, right? And I don't think there's any, I think this is a really good way to continue doing that and to allow the rest of the community that might not understand that to get a little bit of education on that. I know that I've participated in these events with my family and I, I think it's a great way for my kids and other, my neighbors to learn what agriculture really is, so I. I promote this and I, I, I agree that it's a good thing.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioners, anything else? Alright. I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion. Um, motion to, for the approval of, um. File CUP. One, two zero, two two dash one two, a conditional use permit for the Hunt Family Farms. Agar, agritourism operation. This recommendation is for approval, is subject to all review agency requirements and with the following conditions. Um. I'm gonna. Cheat and do what we did earlier and just say as we're listed in our packet, if that's okay? Um, I think that would end my, my motion.
Okay, very good. Have a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Second, Chair. Have a motion and a second. Commissioner McCormick. Commissioner Andrea.
Hi.
Commissioner Clance.
Hi.
Commissioner Neville.
Hi.
Commissioner Edwards.
Hi.
Commissioner Wickern.
Hi.
Chair votes aye as well. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to legislative items, uh, item five point one, ZMA, excuse me, ZMA. Twenty twenty-one dash oh seven. What did I forget? Oh, my goodness, I sure did. I apologize. We won't be moving to legislative items yet. Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair. Be Chair. Item four point three, LBS oh four, two six, two one, consideration and action on a, on a request for final approval of phase two of Smartfield subdivision, twenty-four lots located at seventeen forty south, forty-three hundred west. Felix, if you're not out of gas, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, guys. You have to hear me a lot tonight. Uh, okay. So this is a, a subdivision. A request for final approval. This is smart fields development. The general location forty-three hundred west. And fourteen hundred south. Uh. Zoning in this area is A one. And the subdivision review process in this case is looking at. The final subdivision requirements for the flat. Also, the, um, final improvement drawings. Uh, which are underway right now with the county review agencies. We felt it a good time to get this before the planning commission being that. There's a few last. Comments and then this will be ready for commission. Uh, they've. The developer has provided to us the final will serve letters from the service providers in the area, the copper irrigation. And Taylor West River. And. There's also areas that have already been annexed into. This, into the central Weber sewer district. Uh, with the exception of lot two twenty-one. Oh. Let me go to my new chair. I thought it was. So with lot two twenty-one, um, that's a condition that is included in the staff report that. Annexation is complete with the, with the entire subdivision. The entire phase two, so. The developers well aware of that and. Um, I'll work through the, uh, civil drawings that we have. These, these drawings reflect the most recent changes that we came back with. Uh, I may, I may highlight. The area particular. Is the sixteen hundred South Street. Was widened. To sixty-six feet. That was a planning, uh, division recommendation. And you also have. The, uh, removal of the retention basin within lot two twenty-one. And you have the, uh, addition of the detention pond. They're in lot two oh eight. Uh, that, that is sized appropriately to handle the stormwater. Uh, from this development. The outflow will be to the, uh, Walker Street to the west. And. This, the plan that they, that, uh, is, is completed in coordination with planning and engineering and the developer. Just to, to ensure that. Um, that is following the best, best practices for subdivision design. I'm going to advance through these civil drawings quickly and I, um. Point out some details here. Okay. Uh, I think I went too far. Can we go back one? I wanted to show you the, okay, the cross sections. So you'll notice at the bottom of this page. You have the cross sections for the sixty-six, or I'm sorry, sixty foot right of way, the sixty-six foot roadway section. And the other sixty-six foot roadway section sixteen hundred south. Uh, those. Those do include curb gutter sidewalk. And. Sixty, uh, sixteen hundred south will have the same. Roadway width. As the sixty foot right of way. The, uh, the only exception in these, in this graph, which is sixty-six foot wide roadway section on forty-three hundred west, which would have a greater. Greater amount of, of asphalt. Still with curb gutter sidewalk. So. That pretty much covers what I wanted to talk about today and then what I'll do is I'll move on to staff's recommendation. Uh, staff recommends final approval of smart builds. Subdivision phase two. Consistent with twenty-four lots. And this recommendations is based on the following conditions. So condition one, a subdivision improvement agreement shall accompany the final report flat. A monument improvement agreement. Will be completed under the direction of the county surveyor's office. And the developer shall enter the stormwater maintenance agreement. All areas within phase two are annexed into central Weber sewer district before the subdivision plat records. That's what I have.
One question, Char, Felix and maybe Charlie as well. Hundred, is that kind of in line with the trail that's behind the new high school? Roughly?
Let me check, sorry.
No problem.
It does look like that trail could be a little bit further to the, the west of the subdivision. We are actually working with, uh, another applicant. Um, a property right behind, right to the west of the school. Uh, for potential subdivision that, uh, you guys will be seeing with the rezone here and, and not too long. And they're going to be talking about regional streets and then street alignments heading northward, which eventually will tie into. The western side of the subdivision if we're, if we're cautious about doing so. So when we're looking at that, there should be some connectivity, whether it be trailer street or, or something.
That's what I wanted to know is, is how, what the lineup is. Okay. Alright, very good. Thanks, Charlie. That was, that was my own question. Commissioners, anything?
I got a comment. I'm really bummed that. They didn't push more towards the LED like we'd recommended coming out of this first portion. I get there's groundwater issues, but. I think more so than the LED appearance, or you know, from the stormwater concerns, I, I think they've mitigated those issues, but. I really like the. The feel of the street skates that are in our general plan. That in line with that, you know, if you. What's in the general plan to show a sixty-six foot right of way road. Especially on forty-three hundred and sixteen hundred, because I think those are both laid out to, well, forty-three hundred to, you know, a throw for at least to the railroad tracks and. I think sixteen hundred is kind of. In line to potentially go to forty-seven hundred west. I think that that would have. Kind of. Help keep the rural feel of our area, even with these. You know, the, the subdivisions coming in, there's some larger locks along there. I. I really wish we could have. Implemented that street skate more so than curb gutter and sidewalk. I mean, the sidewalks would still be there.
So is sixteen hundred, it goes through forty-three into the, into phase one, correct?
Yeah, sixteen hundred is intended to be not a major east-west corridor, but of the very least a residential collector, east-west, uh, corridor. So looking at a sixty-six foot wide, if not an eighty foot wide. Uh, right away there in the general plan. That doesn't mean that that's something we can require them right now. And that's kind of the unfortunate part, um, phase two or three or four of this, you know, whatever comes to the west of this, we could. And that's kind of the unfortunate part, um, Phase Two or Three or Four of this, you know, whatever comes to the west of this, we could very well require, uh, something that appears LID. Um, Felix and I did have a good conversation with the county engineers about LID, how it's not, they were concerned, uh, LID wasn't going to work because of groundwater. And I said, it's not necessarily about groundwater, it's about the aesthetic. Uh, so how do we help them get to this aesthetic? Um, to convey the groundwater or excuse me, the surface water of this project to where it needs to go, uh, during a storm event. Um, they were, they were quite concerned if you didn't have this six inch high back curb, uh, you know, with the crown of that road coming down and, and creating the amount of volume that, uh, that high back curb could, uh, then transport in that particular area. Now, that doesn't mean that they're not open to an idea still of a rolled curb. So if you recall from the, um, the street cross section that we're looking at, uh, you'd had the asphalt and then you had a twelve inch ribbon holding the asphalt end that the water would sheet blow over and go into the, um, LID drainage facilities. Rather than a twelve inch, um, ribbon, we can have a foot and a half rolled curb or, or, uh, you know, parabolic, uh, drainage, um, conveyance system and not have a swell off to the side. Um, one of the issues the engineers had, considering that it wasn't adopted as part of the code, was what is the increased cost to the applicant? And, uh, will they push back? So so far it kind of sounds like they have pushed back, just though it doesn't require it. It doesn't mean that they're unwilling if there is still some cost saving measures that they could find to still do it. And so, um, you could always, uh, as part of your approvals, you can always, uh, ask them to reconsider. And work with the engineers to come up with an alternative design that isn't LID, but still brings the, uh, appearance. At the end of the day, we, you know, it's going to come down to the finances and whether or not the applicant can afford to, to execute it. And when I say afford it, the amount of volume, uh, of water that needs to be conveyed here. If they've got to make it up for it by burying a pipe, um, along all of that drainage, rather than just using the drainage swell. That's just added cost that curb gutter would otherwise handle on the surface. Yeah.
There's gotta be, there's gotta be a pipe either way. I mean, regardless of curb gutters in there, there's still gotta be a pipe. It's gotta go into a drain box and be conveyed. We got, I mean, one way or another.
Yeah, I think, I think the concern from engineering from what we heard was that, was that they were concerned about it, uh, a downpour that would spill over then, and then threaten the homes. And I guess that, that's a, you know, a good way to look at it. With the exception of, you know, maybe what we, what, what we need to look at in these developments is the elevations of driveways and, and front doors. Um, if we start developing this out and I don't, I don't think that it's, you know, a role that we should have to enforce. But it's maybe definitely something that we want to look at as we look at that type of road development. If we're going to have that event that, that could spill over that, that swell and then threaten the home, we don't want that either. So.
There's, um, there's a, a project, sorry for being so vocal. There's a project a little bit to the, uh, east and, and south of here. Uh, where some of those roads had to be brought up eight feet just to get the drainage to flow the right way. Um, and that's not even mentioning where the foundations of those, uh, buildings were. So yeah, if we're looking at LID in order to get those swales to drain rather than hold stagnant water with high groundwater. Um, you know, we may be looking at some fill, which may be increasing costs.
Commissioner Clontz?
We just spoke about the, um, the detention pond being diverted through like proper piping or whatever to the slough. Do we need to address that? Or that was already taken care of?
I'll build on that. How about that? And it's something that we can't necessarily require in here. Um, I think they did what we can, what I would like to make a recommendation as we add a, to the conditions that to, to ensure that storm drain outfall line does go from the detention pond to Walker Slough. Um, there to the west, but I, I just, kind of like we talked before. And this is more of a recommendation to staff to take the county engineer that we look more regionalizing this detention. I mean, I think we're missing a huge opportunity here. When you look at what they've got to do on Phase One and some of the retention they got to do over there when they brought Phase One in. Um, I can't remember if it was a preliminary or what it was when we looked at that, but some of the drainage stuff over there was a little different, if I did, in my opinion.
And that water from the east side has to cross to the west side and has to go. So ultimately, as I mentioned before, it, it all flows, the, the natural geography flows to the Walker Slough with that area. So, but I think it would be good to work with staff, work with the Parks District to create some regional detention. So we don't have all these little teeny detention basins all over that become a headache to not only, you know, us as taxpayers for the county to maintain in the future, but, you know, currently a lot of them have become ice horses in the area. So. Yeah. Is that where we were headed? Okay. Anything else, commissioners? I'll ask for a motion.
Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve. We recommend approval of Smartfield subdivision Phase Two, a proposal to create twenty four residential lots. This recommendation is based on the following conditions. A subdivision improvement agreement shall accompany the final recorded plat. A monument and improvement agreement will be completed under the direction of the county surveyor's office. The developer shall enter into a stormwater maintenance agreement. All areas within Phase Two are annexed into the Central Weaver Sewer District before subdivision plat records. A drain line is installed from the proposed subdivision to the slough to the west. And that staff, county staff and the developer reconsider some of the street scapes at least along sixteen hundred South and forty three hundred West. To look more to what the general plan, our new current general plan shows for those type of levels.
I have a motion. I'll ask for a second, please. Have a motion in a second. Commissioner Clontz?
Hi.
Hi.
Commissioner Edwards?
Hi.
Wicker?
Right.
Commissioner McCormick? Commissioner Andriotti?
Hi.
Chair votes aye as well. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, now we can move on to the legislative items. Item five point one, ZMA twenty twenty one oh seven. Consideration and action on requested rezone from A two to C three. Located at approximately nineteen forty one South, fifty one hundred West, Mr. Burton.
Hey, commissioners, it's good to be with all of you tonight. Um, just to give you a little bit of background on this proposal. This was before you, uh, earlier this year in March, uh, the planning commission tabled a, a decision. And stated that, um, the, the tabling was because the general plan hasn't been updated yet. And as you know, within the last month, the, the general plan has been adopted and, and finalized. And the, the general plan, um, for this area talks about office tech and I'll, I'll go through a little, a, a few things here. Um, and I'll try to be as concise as I can, but we happy to go into more details if you'd like. On the screen here is a picture of the, the property, approximately five acres currently zoned A two. Proposals to, to rezone it to C three. Just, uh, a few things for you to consider with rezones. Um, and I believe this was pretty heavily considered during the last meeting, during your meeting in March. Just the compatibility and the appropriateness of the zone with the, the other uses that are currently around it. So we've got agriculture, we've got some residential. And then you should also look at, um, the general plan and what it, what it says, uh, should be in this area. I've got just an image of, and I, I put a, I realized it's kind of confusing. I didn't look at this same dashed red circle, but I put my own dashed red circle just for the presentation to show you where this location is. Office tech, you'll see is what it, that's what it's called. Um, for those that can't see my cursor, that office, office tech up here is shown and then we've got the location of the rezone down here. Um, so what is office tech? Um, fortunately, Charlie pointed out that we do talk a little bit about it in the, um, general plan, although we, we call it business tech and office tech. Um, so it says business tech and innovation parks where land uses rarely occur outdoors. Uh, are generally a low intrusive use on their neighbors. As long as traffic impacts and site design, architecture and landscaping are addressed to provide a pleasant and harmonious built environment. A business or tech park can provide significant contributions toward onsite public recreation and green space investments. That can tie adjoining land uses or neighborhoods together through the park's canvas. So in this case, as was explained back in March, the developer has a, a buyer in mind that, that would like to have some warehousing and some office space. Not necessarily anything related to parks, although you could, you could make the argument that, um, that it would be low intrusive, um, and that, uh, land uses would, would rarely occur outdoors. Um, the C three zone does have some design standards that we'd have to look at if someone were to submit an application for a building permit. We would look at there, it's like setbacks from residential zones and agricultural zones. There are landscaping requirements and, and architecture requirements with the C zone. Some things to consider with the C three zone are its, its purpose and intent. So I've got it here on the screen, just as listed in our county code, the C three zone. Regional commercial zone is established for the purpose of providing commercial goods and services that are more likely to be patronized by those in the surrounding region. Um, I, I highlighted a few of them in my staff report and if you'd like, we can go through all those uses. Uh, we don't have to. And we'd recommend that you don't, but there are some uses in C three that probably wouldn't fit in the area. So if this is going to be allowed, it should be done through a, sorry, it can be done, may be done through a development agreement that restricts the uses. Uh, a few of them I was thinking about when I was looking at the code are hotels, grocery stores, auto sales, pawn shop, sheet metal shop, trailer sales and service. Truck terminal, et cetera. Now, those uses are all great and they all have their purpose, uh, but they might not fit into this specific agricultural slash residential area. So given that information, I've, I've got a couple of options here, uh, and you're welcome to look at and take either of these or to make your own recommendation. The applicant's looking for you to make a recommendation to the county commissioners so they can get through the process and get a, a final decision. This has been in, um, in, in probably near a year now that they've been waiting to make a decision. So they would like you to give a recommendation to county commissioners, whatever that recommendation may be. Uh, option one on this screen would be a recommendation for approval, um, of the rezone to C three with a development that restricts the uses to only the permitted office slash tech uses in the C three zone as allowed by the county commission. If you go that route, what we'll do as staff is we'll set up a work session with the county commissioners and with the developer and figure out what, probably what the county commissioners think are appropriate uses for C three that fit in with, with office tech. Option two is a similar recommendation. However, you, you can, you can propose to restrict the uses to what, what I've outlined here, these three bullet points. Office in which good, goods or merchandise are not created, exchanged or sold, professional office and warehouse storage door only. You're welcome to add and take away from that list if, if you like in your recommendation. Uh, that's based on the findings that are, that are in the report that are below, uh, that this complies with the general plan, future land use map. Um, and it complies with the rezoning procedures. And I will mention, we've already held a public hearing on this back in March and had the, the notice that's required. So this won't be a public hearing. Uh, I'm happy to answer any questions if you have.
Commissioners?
I don't know if I got questions. I got comments.
Right? We'll take you.
Well, I have some, as I've mentioned, I have some heartburn with this because we, like you mentioned, Steve, we adopted this general plan less than a month ago. And this is slated as office tech, not as a commercial area. But as Charlie has pointed out, if we follow the outline that's stated in the general plan literature, I think we can make it work through some, through the development agreement to ensure, I mean, for the, for the property owners. Bennett, or not necessarily benefit, but his right to his ground, you know, we, I, I think we could look through the uses and come to an agreement through the development agreement that, you know, the county code doesn't specify what office tech is just yet. We're seeing this prior to the recommendation I made when I adopted, when I made the motion to approve the general plan was that we don't see this stuff till we make the code fit it, but I get this one's been in there for a while, so we should probably act on it. My first inkling is to deny it just because it doesn't fit the general plan. But I think we can, like I'd mentioned, I think staff to commission, if they move forward with option one, it would work. Or we table it again and go back and look at the uses of business tech, office tech. And, and adopt that into the code. Those are the two things I feel with this.
Option one or option two?
I could go either way. I would support option one.
Can I, oh, Chair, I just want clarification. So when we look at the, the general plan, we, so this brown area on the general plan, right here, how big is that area?
Charlie, I think it encompassed this specific property. Correct me if I'm wrong, but five acres approximately? No, it actually is, is bigger than that. It runs along fifty one hundred, um, west on essentially the west side of it. It, it goes a little bit further west than the depth of this property would otherwise go. And it extends almost all the way up to where, um, to eighteen or sixteen, where eighteen hundred South, uh, would go. So right now, if you imagine how that, how the area is configured, eighteen hundred ties into forty seven hundred, um, at that intersection. And then from there it swings to the south and becomes nineteen hundred, uh, south. Uh, so in essence, um, or excuse me, and then the applicant's property is, uh, just, uh, buffering, um, the southern side of, of nineteen hundred south, just a, a hair away from it. This goes a little bit further to the north of that, maybe halfway between nineteen hundred south and, um, eighteen hundred south. Uh, and then extends southward, um, almost to the southern boundary of, um, the Pioneer property.
So it's, but twenty acres or?
I, I would guess twenty to thirty acres.
Like quarter of the property? Could be, however we define, I, I just, if we had a I'd feel a little more fine, but where we one area, the quarter of what we designated it. And we, we said when we did the general plan, see what people proposed to us. So it, it's difficult because, um, I don't, are we still working? Can we know what exactly? Location?
We don't. So you could, the, the, the request is to rezone to C three. The owner understands that they may be limited to the uses that they could use. But my understanding, um, is that that could be sold to a different company that has a different plan for it altogether.
So it's just hard for me when we don't have zone. I'd like to see a company come in and say, this is how I want to use it and this is what it's going to be in them. I'm like, okay, this is what, this is what the community is telling us we need here and assess it from there. But having just a blanket rezone for the sake of rezoning is more difficult unless residential, um, so that was, that was my two cents. I, I still, I think option one.
I, I think to kind of address two things that I'm hearing tonight. One, um, you know, if this is done with a, with a, with the determination that a master development agreement has to go along with it. I think that that pretty much is going to dictate what goes in. So I think that that kind of safeguards it. Two, you know, we're kind of hung up on the general plan being scripture. General plan is a living document that can be changed at any time. Any good reason, not for any reason, for any good reason. So I think that, that we need to get beyond thinking of, of the general plan as being something that we can't change. And Charlie, if I'm speaking out of line here or legal, please, please jump in.
No, I mean, I'll, I'll jump in regardless. How about that? Uh, uh, honestly, if, uh, if we continue to consider this a fluid document, we're going to be doing our jobs, right? We don't want to get twenty years out and say, man, we can't change the plan because it's the plan. Uh, that's kind of where we were just before, uh, working on this plan. We, we had a lot of folks in the community.
Uh, that's kind of where we were just before uh working on this plan, we we had a lot of folks in the communities saying, we don't want to do. Those small little uh modifications here and there because we need to look at the whole thing, well. The way that plans are supposed to work is they're supposed to be dynamic, we're supposed to be able to get a broad picture of what the whole thing is. But make those small surgical changes over time as they make sense and as they provide a public good.
Right, and that's that's, thank you, you probably put it in better terms than I did, that's that's exactly the point, this this is something that. As we move on, our next meeting can bring something. You know, brand new to us, this one we're familiar with, but it definitely could bring something that we may be a little bit familiar with. But we don't know what it is yet, and that could, you know, really um take us in another direction, so. We've got to be able to be a little more open minded in that regard. Yes, we have a general plan, and yes, we had public participation, but the public also knew. That the destination of that plan is that it's fluid and it's living and it and it changes, so. Having said that, commissioners, anything else?
Chair, I agree with your comment, it's a fluid document, but it's also a document that's twenty seven days old since it's been approved. I this, this item was brought to us through the process and the public weighed in, and that's why it is the way it is. So I don't feel, I mean, I'm a hundred percent in agreeance, it's a fluid, we need to look at each item. As it comes, but it's not like this is something new that we're seeing today, this was being proposed as we created the general plan. And and I think we've done due diligence and, you know, there's a reason why it went office tech. And not commercial, why that's not indirect there, so. Um, I think there's a whole nother part of this discussion that we've still got to work out, and. Just like it shows on this plan, fifty one hundred's meant to go through there, this is a key area. This and and a couple of the properties there, well, one other property that's. Not allowing fifty one hundred to be a a through street through there, and I think as part of this rezone, that needs to be. Negotiated and discussed how that's going to play out as well, so.
Anything else, commissioners?
As far as the statements with the general plan, I get that we have, it's only twenty one days old, but. I don't want to hold them up or punish them, I guess. Just because we haven't had the opportunity to update it, meets the current code. Fixing with that. Not saying that it is, I just don't want that to be our reason, is that, oh, we haven't been able to update code yet, they're proposing it. That shouldn't be their responsibility, wait on this stuff, dude.
Yeah, and 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 I agree with Commissioner Edwards on the road, that definitely needs to be addressed because, you know, the future plans is for fifty one hundred to extend. From twenty five fifty, and I would assume that it'll go all the way to at least, uh, what is that, eleven hundred south or twelve street, is it's?
Eleven fifty, eleven fifty, nine hundred or something up there, so.
Um, yeah, I I definitely think that within within the realm of this process, we do need to. Decide. Or come to some conclusions on what the what what the impact on this is going to be with the road included, you know.
I think with that being said, I I would feel more comfortable, and I don't want to keep pushing this out, but I would. With the discussion we've had tonight, I'd be more inclined to table this item until the county commission can have the work session. Bring it back to us to let us know what uses are going to be in there, and a final decision be on the road before we grant this rezone.
Any comments?
I actually think that uh. Mr. Ropelato deserves an a uh. Answer tonight. And uh, I don't think table and it's going to be. Appropriate, I think that. Whatever our planners cannot come up with, they're going to have to do. And at least he'd have a direction and a start. I I'd say that. And let the uh planning staff.
I'll mention that the owner's also present, if you'd like to speak to them at all.
Commissioners?
I agree with um Commissioner McCormick, I like option one better than two, I feel like two is too um too broad. As far as type of businesses, I think about businesses and I think of that being an office where somebody. Technically could be making T-shirts, it's not a real huge effect, but if. If I was reading this, it would say they wouldn't be able to do that, but it's an item that would be exchanged, right, so. I think it's a good idea to let the commissioners work through with the landowner and see what they they should approve that way. I feel like that's kind of our place is to recommend, recommend things for the commissioners to to finish out on, so.
Well, if we pass it with number one, staff has the right to go through and see what's appropriate in the area. So I don't see that we're hurting our our future plans, still up to us to decide what's best for the area, I understand.
Neither of the options. Right, so so how how do we deal with the road? I mean, it's, it'll have to be there.
Yeah, what are what are our opportu- opportunities there?
I mean, so so what, how how would we deal with that?
If the zone was, let's say it was commercial today, they didn't have to go through a rezone, and they're, they wanted to, it was vacant, and they asked for. A warehouse, we would look at it, we'd look at our uh. To my knowledge, it's not a legal parcel, so they would have to go through a subdivision process, which is where the county has the opportunity. To ask for right of way dedication, and also the county has to figure out what um. What of those improvements are proportionate to the property, Charlie was making fun of me for my ease. I want him to recite Peter Piper. I just want to make sure that June can hear me in the recording, uh, but we have, that's our opportunity to look at what is proportionate to. Uh, um, what is being proposed, we can't um. We can't ask too much, obviously, we have to figure out what that is, but to ask for nothing and to say we don't want you to dedicate the road or to improve it. I think would be a really, really a missed opportunity, and so what I'm proposing, what I cited in my staff report is. If a if a recommendation goes forward tonight, regardless of what that recommendation may be. The development agreement should specify what what the owner is going to do, whoever, if it's the current owner or future owner. If they're just going to dedicate right of way, if they're going to dedicate and pay for half, um, we we're comfortable working that out. With the county commission, but in my report, I also welcome um the planning commission thoughts on that.
Well, it can be put in as a condition, if somebody can wordsmith the condition for that.
When it comes down to it, and so I think this is where we get. Change ads. The ones that start the zoning change. Maybe option one, option one.
Yeah, you could definitely make that if you like, that's fine.
Okay, so do you want right away can uh dedication, do you want, do you want uh all the way to road? To to a certain amount of completion, I mean, so that opens up a whole extra conversation. I think if you're going to allow the staff and county commission to. Define the uses, I think you let them define.
The road.
The road, at least, I mean, your conditioning, a condition could be a final decision on fifty one hundred west. Be be made, you know, at least if I, I mean, let them, if you want to push the the zoning chair, the the uses. Off on the county commission and staff, I feel that's what we are here to do, is recommend uses, I don't think, I think we're kicking the can down the road. But um, that could be a way to wordsmith it, so, but just. My thoughts on wordsmithing it, I won't make the motion. I, my motion, like I said, I'd either table it or deny. So that's my thoughts.
Anything else, commissioners? You have something on your mind, Commissioner Clons? All right, then I will ask for the motion for this item. Now I'll get that now. I'm not going to say it's going to go anywhere, but I'll make a motion, Chair, and make a motion, we table this item until we can. Go through and and work out the the uses to be defined in C three and and the final decision on fifty one hundred west be made. I have a motion, do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Clons?
Oh, yay. Go with it, yes.
Commissioner Andriotti?
Nope.
Commissioner McCormick?
Nay.
Commissioner Neville?
Nay.
Commissioner Wickern?
Aye.
Commissioner Edwards?
Aye.
Chair votes no. So, okay. Do we want any more conversation, or do I, we want me to ask for another motion?
Chair, is it possible to give the the landowner an opportunity to speak? Specific questions, but I mean, if they would like to have an opportunity.
Mr. Opelado, would you like, do you have anything to tell us?
Um, the Randy's asking if it's a like a condition, if it's listed as a conditional use. Um, that we would consider uh the road situation there, that that is true, um, I don't. I don't know if if these uses will be listed as conditional uses or if they need to be, um, but uh, but. The road, the road situation will be considered um, really regardless of of what you do. If it doesn't get rezoned, if it stays A two, the road will be considered whenever somebody wants to develop it, regardless.
Anything else, Mr. Opelado? No, commissioner, any questions?
My question would just be, do you have a, you don't have a buyer in mind, I just. And it's repolito, if by chance. Uh, development agreement, I I guess this is our concern and a part of the tabling, why I table it was that. Um, I don't want you to have to go through and pay the fee again to get to this process if it just gets denied after getting. This far and then starting over again, but you'd rather it just go through and it passes or fails with the commission than tabling it.
Okay, anything else, commissioner?
So it all has to come back to us again, ever. Okay, just goes in front of the commissioners, next.
Yeah, with with, or with with.
Yeah, if it's a small lot, uh, so the small news, not, sorry, the new small subdivision ordinance says whether or not a street is involved. If it's under ten lots, it's staff review, so you're right, you may not see it, but you will see it during design review. Unless through the rezone, design review is accomplished through the development agreement, so. For example, if they were to come in with a specific, an engineering specific design that's attached to a development agreement. Um, that can very well uh constitute approval of design review, most of the time it's not done that way, most of the time you get a development approval saying you could do this. Bring in your design review and meet all of our design review standards after you've gone through the subdivision process. If subdivision is even needed, I I don't know, we haven't determined whether or not it's a lot of record to my knowledge.
And at that point, they look at the road and everything.
If you were to say that in your recommendation, and that gets passed by the planning commission. What Steve will do is he'll work with the the county commission and the applicant to write a development agreement that provides more specificity to it. You know, specifically tying it to fifty one hundred and specifically tying it to a specific right of way width and all that.
Anything else, commissioners? Okay. I'll ask for a motion.
Mister Chairman, I'll uh attempt a motion here. Hang with me here, dang. Think we ought to re- recommend approval. Uh, forward approval, recommendation to the county commission to approve the rezone of approximately five point oh eight acres. From A one C three. As a sub- subsequent action. That a development agreement be prepared that addresses the uses. For 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 this particular property, and it also needs to. Take into consideration the road of right of way. Uh, for fifty one hundred. And hopefully, uh, that within that development plan. Uh. And I get, I guess what I want to say here is, is the development plan would have to be developed by. Maybe the owner, the people that uh have an interest in that for the land use in the planning department. And have that. To where that it would be approved by the county commissioners. Oh, excuse me, A two, A two to three, thank you.
A two to C three.
To C three.
All right.
Gotcha, yeah. And I I kind of got hung up on this uh subsequent thing, but but after that. But that that's where the rubber's going to hit the road in my mind, all interested parties going to have to sit down, hammer out that. Development agreement that takes care of the uses and the property that the county commissioners can live with.
Everybody understand the the complexity of that. I mean, it's really, it's really pretty simple, I think that it was more explanation.
And and also, uh, the recommendation comes on the findings outlined in the staff report, thank you.
Okay, commissioners? Any concerns about that motion? Okay, I'll ask for a second.
Oh, a second. Second.
I was trying to beat Brad. Oh, I'm sorry, we can.
I haven't, I haven't accepted the second, so I have a motion, we can discuss the motion.
As we look through these and we look at these rezones, you know, we've, we we approved the rezone. That's coming back for us to approve the development agreement on our next item. And, you know, they they brought to us a full plan that shows what it's going to be, what it's going to look like. What public amenities are coming with it and everything else, and and I feel with what we're doing with this rezone. Is we're blanketing, kind of opening the door, we don't know what it's going to come. We don't know if it's going to fit. I think that they should bring us a proposal similar to what we're going to see in this next one to approve the development agreement to to make sure it does fit. Before it comes in, but just a comment I wanted to make with it.
I could live with that comment.
Anything else, commissioners? All right, I'll ask for a second to Commissioner Andriotti's uh motion.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Commissioner Clance.
Yay.
Commissioner Neville.
Aye.
Commissioner Edwards.
Nay.
Commissioner Wickern.
Aye.
Commissioner McCormick.
Aye.
Commissioner Andrea.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries six one. Thank you very much. We have passed a positive recommendation based on that motion to the county commission. Mister Opelado, that'll be your next step. You don't have to see us until uh a later date.
How about next month?
All right. Next item on our agenda. Item five point two. ZDA twenty twenty two, hopeful. Public hearing for consideration of a request for a recommendation to the county commission regarding a zoning development agreement associated with the rezoning of approximately two hundred forty two acres. Located at approximately twenty eight seventy five west, twenty six hundred north. From the A one zone to the C one, R two, R three, R one, ten. And R fifteen and master plan development overlay zones. Mister Burke.
Yeah, Commissioners, I just can share some things on my screen. My uh, we were at the last month with the Ogden Valley Planning Commission. I was sharing something and somebody. Uh, hacked my screen. I didn't know that they could do that on the Zoom call, so hopefully that doesn't happen tonight. So what we've got before you is consideration of a development agreement for the rezone that was considered by the planning commission last October. You might remember that meeting, uh, October twelfth of last year. And the planning commission made a recommendation to the county commissioners. To approve the rezone with um. A number of conditions. It looks like fourteen conditions and there are some. Sub subsets of those, each of the, a few of those conditions. Before I get too far into my presentation and and describing what's going on here, I just wanted to mention. Normally. Uh, as as staff, according to state code, we we wouldn't bring a development agreement to you like this. You might be like wondering why. Um, it's before you because really a development agreement is intended to implement. Your motion and the the decision of the county commissioners when it comes to legislative items like this. The developer um requested that it be brought before you. Uh, because there have been a few changes made. Now, I'm on my screen, I'm showing you what those changes are. Um, a a few changes on the proposed zoning, but ultimately the same number of units. Um, you're getting the same. Let's say generally the same amount of open space and trails and amenities and. Um, but I just wanted to mention that, that the reason it's before you is because there have been some changes. Um, and. The developer suggested that there may be some some case law that that suggests that it needs to come back before you for your consideration before it goes to the county commission. So with that being said, um, if you're okay with it, uh, I'll. I'll ask the developer to come explain a few things and then I'll offer my recommendation to you, walk you through.
Commissioners.
Can I just make one comment?
Yeah.
Basically, we're we're here looking at the development agreement. Right, not the reason, the reason me. Granted, as long as they met our conditions.
All right, anything else?
That clear, yeah, we got a development agreement, the rezone has already happened. However, we have. Um, we are required to hold a public hearing when it comes to consideration of development agreements. Um, so that's what we do.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, we'll ask uh the developer to give us this reason.
Awesome, okay, Brian Bayless. Nelson Holmes. Um, and uh, Brandon, I appreciate your comment. Um, in terms of, I, yeah, it feels like we've kind of already legislated the the rezone. Um, I think all but the commissioner Neville or sorry, yeah, planning commissioner Neville and. Thoughts were there um at that meeting, so it was about a year ago now. Um, we're excited to just be here and make some progress. Um, and I guess in an abundance of caution, as we've kind of consulted with our legal team, as you can tell. That agreement in your packet, it's a, it's an eighty nine page form, it's a great one. There's a lot of detail and time and effort and work that's gone into that. Um, we've, we've engaged um a a planner that's here tonight and that can address any questions I had him, just in case. There were questions that I couldn't answer that you all had. Um, we've had our legal team kind of look over this and their recommendation was that based on that case law, like you said. That it would be a good idea for us to go back uh through the planning commission in preparation for going. Um, and so with that, I guess the the one of the changes or one of the requirements in that zone in the master plan development overlay zone. Is there's a requirement of development. And so that development agreement is what we're talking about tonight. That's the subject of the purpose of of tonight. Um, and so I guess I just wanted to point out a few of the similarities. All, all of the conditions, um, all of the conditions, all of the fourteen conditions that Steve talked about. Are in this development agreement in one form or another with a few variations. So as we sat down and talked, so 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 there, there's uh commitments that we won't uh object to the annexation into a city, into an adjacent city, whether that be. Plain City or Far West, and we've agreed to do that. That's not a concern of ours. Um, there are um limiting the number of households to more than seven hundred and twenty five units. We are not asking for more than seven hundred and twenty five units. We're consistent. Excuse me. Um, anyway, we we can go down all of this. There's a, there's a lot of um detail in those fourteen conditions and. For what it's worth, um, we've met all of them with a few, with with one exception. Um, there's one hundred total uh total fourplex homes that were that were suggested for approval. Uh, townhomes. And so what we've asked for is essentially, we went back to to Plain City. Um, we we chatted with them as well as with the staff, um, the county staff and kind of said, hey, look. If we took seven hundred and twenty five units on two hundred and thirty six acres. We took those hundred and count, hundred townhomes at about ten units to the acre and then we just divided. So you take one hundred townhomes off of the seven hundred and twenty five minutes, you've got six hundred and twenty five minutes remaining. And if you divide that by, take out our open space, you divide that by the remaining portion of property, essentially you're left with like three or four thousand square foot lots. Six hundred and twenty five. And we didn't think that was a good plan for anybody. Um, and so we said, hey, look, let's talk about some variation. So we've talked about clustering some of those. We have attached patio homes. Which have sold extremely well. Um, if you've been up to the barn golf course, there's the attached patio homes that are just to the east of the barn. Um, as we talked to the city, uh, Plain City about that, there was two hundred of those units. That makes sense. If we can cluster the units and provide more larger lots on the periphery of the project, that seems like a. And we were also able to kind of talk to them about taking the hundred uh townhomes up to a hundred and twenty five towns. Which we felt like, again, allowed for us to have a lot more uh larger lots on the periphery of the project. And so that, that's really maybe more than anything else. That's the biggest change. So we had one hundred towns. We've changed that to a hundred and twenty five towns. And then two hundred attached patios and that's right in um one of the exhibits in the development. Um, as you can see that plan again, to Bryn's point, we're not necessarily looking at legislating, hey, why the rezone makes sense. But that's essentially what that plan looks like. It it highlights a lot of the open spaces that we're proposing. A lot of the trails, that rules redline their trails. We've got community gardens, we've got trails along the open space corridors, dog parks. There's a lot of amenities that you can justify with with the increased uh density that we're asking for. Um, that we that were, that we were, I guess, approved for from the planning commission in our last, in our last session. Um, so let me just make sure I've hit all of the biggies. Um, oh, the the one thing that I will say as well is obviously with the the talk of the general plan, we basically have been discussing. Um, and you and played such a big part uh of the creation of that general plan. We are exactly in alignment with the general plan, both in terms of the location of the commercial along twenty six hundred north as well as the mixed. Um, our general plan shows mixed, I think in the jet, the county general plan shows mixed use residential. Which is exactly what we're proposing for the remaining portion that there is. Um, so you can see there the 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 kind of uh yellowish color is that mixed use residential. Um, and then the red is mixed use commercial. The only other change that I just wanted to highlight really quickly was we've taken um the the commercial, the commercial zone was originally, it suggested or recommended for a C one. And we've actually asked for a C two zone. And uh, it's it's somewhat similar to the conversation that was just happening, but it's like a C two light. Um, essentially what we're asking for is that zone because as I looked down that list, it's more of a, the C two is more of a regional commercial zone. With the major north-south road connections that will be through this property as well as twenty six hundred north, we felt like. The more regional approach was was a better fit from a commercial perspective. And I'll just list the four or five different uses that we felt like, hey, if if we go with the C one, we're gonna miss those uses. And those are sporting goods stores, uh, pet parlors, car washes, clothing stores, convenience stores, um, daycares. Uh, dry cleaning, um, rec center or gym, professional or legal office. As well as drive-through restaurants. So those were uses that were either either not permitted or required some conditional. Element to get approval in these areas. And from our perspective, those are all uses that would be right in line with what we're proposing. And what the residents uh services that the residents would want to have. Um, so I would say that's the other big change and um. The last thing that I will say is there have been um a few like minor tweaks in terms of the layout for the transportation plan. There was some development that was occurred uh that has occurred or at least is proposed to occur to the north. So we've aligned our road connections to that development as well as to the uh west. And so we've tried to kind of tweak our plan and morph our plan to be in line with the existing development, adjacent development. So. Again, a lot of time and effort and energy has gone into this as opposed to kind of guessing maybe what some of your pet issues are. I would love to, you know, open it up to comments or questions from you all. Um, and try to address those, or if again, if there's plenty of questions, we could have. Um, Troy, he's dying, Troy's dying to get up here and present that our our plan. So, um, any questions that I can uh address?
Commissioners.
Just one, as we, kind of as you've explained, you know, you're trying to get more of the. Smaller lots in the middle, which I liked about the original plan, keeping a good buffer around the outside of the project. There's just that area. Kind of that northern area that's now gonna allow R three, which would be more of the fourplexes from what I. That would have but the adjacent. Home and and I do understand in, is it Westfields in Plain City from what I did some research on?
Yeah.
Those are ten thousand square foot lots?
Yes.
So. That's part of my question. The second part of my question is. In that same area, there's kind of a no man land zone there. What is that?
Yes, so great question. Let me, let me take a minute to address that. We are developing those homes today. So we're in the process of building those as we speak. So those are our residents and we've told them what's happening. Um, it's in Plain City, so I don't think we'll be able to make it part, not that we care about this, but I don't think we'll be able to make it part of the HOA. Um, but ultimately, those are, those are our residents. And so we told them about JDC, we told them that it's coming. That area right there is actually uh preserved as open space. So that's another reason why that buffer does. As part of the West Park, yep, we call it West Park, not yet, but that's part of the West Park and it's. You guys see that there just north of kind of that, yeah. I would guess that that's the width of a lot, the width of the depth of a lot, so probably a hundred andish, I would say a hundred andish feet. Um, and then, and then, and then the only other correction, I guess, Brent, to your comment. Just because it's R three doesn't mean that they'll be counted. The townhomes are kind of all bunched in that brown color that you can see right next to the. So all of the townhomes will be located in there. So just because it's R three doesn't mean that it will be townhomes. The challenge with um, the challenge with some of the county zoning is it doesn't allow for the lot sizes that we're proposing. And so the R three was the best sound to accommodate those smaller lot sizes, which we are voluntarily limiting ourselves to in this development. So we're not proposing that we put townhomes there, we wouldn't put townhomes there, but we are proposing a little smaller lot than what the county will allow.
Anything else, Commissioners?
A question on going from C one to C two.
Yeah.
Would you be willing to entertain kind of the same thing like the motion was made before? Kind of work with planning staff and go through that list of allowed and not allowed, just so, I mean, you have some valid reasons of why I I. I agree, that could be a regional, you're on a main road, it could be a regional hub for some different types of uses and. My only concern is, is there are a few of these as I look through from C one to C two. Of what goes into being a. A permitted use. I don't necessarily know if that's something that. Exactly. So I mean, just through the discussion, I mean, could.
Yeah.
Could that be addressed in this? Development agreement? Just to make sure that you're both on the same, that the county and and you as the developers on the same page.
Can I throw out just a couple of thoughts to that point? I I don't mind, I don't mind doing that, and I think we're open to that. Just two thoughts. Number one, this is our. And so I do not want to shoot something. I I mean, I don't know what the permitted use would be, it was like, one is allowed and one's not, so. I guess, hopefully that gives you some level of comfort that we're not gonna want to do that. Um, that's a, that's a critically important. But marketing connection for all of our homes. Um, number one, so number one. Number two is we're not asking for C three, we're asking for C two, which. That's, that's a much more. So our hope would be that we can.
Commissioners? Well, we could be here for quite a while.
High manufacturer or something like that? Yeah, there we go.
But I I get where you're going, that I, it's the face of your development, you're, you're not gonna put something in there that.
I'll let you.
You know, at first glance. The change there. It almost looks like they're coming in requesting more, but the numbers haven't changed, you know, at the end of the day. There's a lot of open space that's coming with this. I think there's a, you know. A- as we look at this, we're seeing what we're gonna get, basically. I think there's some good community open space. You know. Some, some good amenities that can come to the area.
Yeah, well, first and foremost, that it's a planned development that. That's big, that's huge, you know, and and there are. Beyond. The realm, things that it it's going to need to adhere to, and so that's, that, those are all positives. Um, anything else for staff or for the applicant? Or the extension of the applicant or planner?
I have just one question, I guess, and hopefully it's relevant. Just curious of what the plan is for when you will put in the parks and those types of facilities.
That's a great question. So, so similar to the commercial, that's our kind of our front door. Um, we've put those those open spaces in kind of key central locations. And that becomes one of our best sales. So we're motivated as a company to get those in. We're not gonna be able to get them all in. So I think what the development agreement talks about is as uh development occurs adjacent to those open spaces is when that open space is required to. That's kind of how we try to do this. That's a good question. Because getting those amenities in.
Yeah, to build on that, so are they like included in a phasing plan with it?
Uh, no, I think the language specifically says when it's when development occurs adjacent to those parks.
I have a little bit of concern with that, just for the reason. Of security. I I mean, and I get it, I I. But say. Five years down the road, the economy crashes and we end up with a Taylor or or Sunset Equestrian. That was a great idea like this. But. The money didn't finish the amenities and then it got brought in with the. Reason, you know, or a, or a completely different application. Well, the first twenty people that bought in there. Bought with the understanding that they're gonna get these amenities and now those amenities aren't coming. And and I'm not saying even a phasing plan isn't gonna protect us from that. You know, but at least it would secure in. If you build. X amount, and I don't know if you could word it with so many. Townhomes and so, well, I guess that kind of goes with the adjacent thing, so I don't know, maybe.
Commissioners, we've already got this written down in our cluster code, and even though this is, this isn't a cluster subdivision, we can work with the applicant to implementing maybe some of the language that's in that cluster code. That basically says you'll be plating and installing on a proportionate basis of uh the acreage of development. And something to that effect.
That's the updated cluster, not the, not the Jacqueline Estates cluster.
That's correct. The 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 updated cluster that we still are going to update further.
Mister Claus just pointed out, in my original conditions, when I made the motion, it was listed there, so. Condition number eight was parks and open space areas should be provided in the proposal and phased in proportionate amounts. Condition number eight was parks and open space areas should be provided in the proposal and phased in proportionate amounts as the project is phased. As long as we've got that addressed in this document, I think I'll leave that up to staff to make that call. I'm comfortable.
I'm comfortable too, as long as someone's watching it go in. I I don't want to be dividing lots up among property owners out there like we did. That's that one's still burning in my head. Okay.
Excellent. Well, that's a great, thanks for addressing that, Brian.
Anything else, Commissioners? Okay. All right, before we open to public hearing, Commissioners, any any discussion among the Commission?
Chair, may I may I offer our staff recommendation for you before you open it up?
Certainly.
So I'm going to keep it just really concise here. I think Brian hit a hit on a lot of the the questions that you may have had. I just wanted to go over what briefly what the agreement, what this agreement does, what the intent is. So a- as we know, one of them is that it, the agreement will prohibit future owners from protesting annexation. Um at a later date. Um it also limits the number of dwelling units so that it doesn't exceed the amount that that has been discussed. Um and that the amount that was discussed in the in the original rezoning motion. Uh it limits the development types. Now, if you were curious, Brian did a good job explaining what a what these patio homes are. But basically it limited, it limits townhomes to one twenty-five and attached patio home to two hundred. Um the development agreement will outline the street locations, it will provide architecture standards. And outline the zoning of each of each development area. Of course, we have to look to the general plan whenever there's a rezone. Uh this, the general plan shows this as a mixed use and commercial area, which is what is being proposed. Um I just to offer the staff recommendation. We're recommending that you forward a positive recommendation to the county commissioners regarding this two twenty-two dash zero four, this development agreement. ZDA twenty twenty-two dash zero four, based on can the following conditions, one provisions will be added to the agreement that require the HOA to be professionally managed. That was part of the original uh rezoning and um that that specific provision is not yet in the development agreement. Two definitions will be added or modified in the agreement as requested by the planning staff and the county attorney. Um we're still working through a a few things. We think we've got a a pretty good agreement that meets the intent of what you've seen in the rezone, but we uh we understand that we may need to add or modify a few definitions. Um three edits that implement the planning commission's intent regarding the rezone may be made to the draft agreement. As directed by the planning staff and the county attorney before the agreement is considered by the county commission. And this is based on the the findings that are on on the staff report. One thing I'll add is that it also, one of the findings should be that it meets the uh the general plan. I will say this is a staff recommendation. Um your, we we encourage you to take it. We also encourage you to come up with your own recommendation, whatever you feel that that may be. Uh we've noticed for this and sent out public notice um for a for a public hearing.
Thank you. Commissioners, any comments? Before we move on?
I thought of another question that either maybe Steve or Brian can answer again. Being an HOA, these part facilities and things like that that we talked about prior, are they going to be open to general public or only the HOA members?
Let Brian answer that one.
Okay.
We've we've identified, and Steve, I don't know if it's too much to pull that plan back up. Um but what we've identified is there are a few areas that would not be publicly available, that usually are more problematic um in terms of safety and health and safety issues. So like, we we would envision that there are um there are two HOA locations and it's kind of hard to see on the map there. Um but there's one kind of right across the street from the Central Park and then. So that location up there would be one of the locations for uh for an HOA amenity. We would envision clubhouse, changing rooms, pools, not sure exactly what that looks like. Um but that's kind of what we would propose. And then the second HOA amenity would be able to go west, either that of that location. Um I think, yeah, right there. So that would be kind of the second, and we've identified. That's kind of the heart of um a lot of the attached patios that we're proposing, as well as kind of the detached patios. So we kind of envision like a little smaller, uh more kind of retiring type pool in clubhouse uh space. Um so that's kind of what we've proposed. The rest of the amenities will be publicly available. So everything that you see on that map, including the playgrounds, the pavilions, the football courts. Community gardens probably will be HOA. But then, you know, all the trails and open spaces as well. So that's kind of what we.
Anything else, Commissioner?
Chair? I'm not a Commissioner, but I just want to let you know. Um I like Steve's recommendation because it does allow the county attorney's office to provide some input and recommendation here. My office has gone through half of this agreement and yeah, this is appropriately labeled the draft because we've identified a number of concerns which will change. Most of them just legal concerns, not with the units or numbers or a location or anything like that, but just with the legality of the agreement. As is, it will have substantial changes before my office.
Okay, but physically, it's it's dimensionally correct.
That's just because you guys like different wordage than we would use. And we like to abide by our county ordinances, but you know.
All right, I guess you got to get paid for something. All right.
That's why we like to leave. Thanks, Brent.
Anything else, Commissioners? All right, I'll take a motion to open public hearing. And before I do that, um anyone uh speaking, you're limited to three minutes. Give your name and the city that you uh live in and um we'll go from there. I'll entertain that motion.
Make that motion?
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. All right, we are now in public hearing. So as I stated, anyone that wants to talk, please uh address the the commission from the podium. Give your name and the city you come from.
Uh Brayden Standard, twenty-seven twenty-seven, very simple far west. Just want to highlight a couple of things. I spoke the last time we talked about this property. Just a note to the county, I know this is going to come, I know that this is going to happen, but I I kind of feel like this is a little bit of a bait switch from what was originally presented. To um the general public. We all just got our notices like two days ago that this would be happening, which is why you don't see a lot of this. Um and so this is different than what was shown to us. While the previous one, we had maps prior to, you can see what we're going to see today. This is kind of the first time I'm going to see the plot. So. I I just think the public and the community around this development isn't really aware of the changes that. So that's one comment. The other thing is, as you go to uh the residential homes that are backing on the east side of the property. The elevation is significantly different. JDC Ranches to the existing homes. Uh I would like to see things where we address the privacy of the residents that would have been put single family homes directly in the background. With a much higher elevation than what this. So um again, want to work together and and make something that works for everybody. Uh but I will tell you the community around this is not aware of what's being presented when they're asking to give the buy.
Thank you.
Miles Robinson, twenty-nine eighty-three West, twenty-six hundred North, Plain City. The only concern I have about this project uh is on the corner road and it might be too late then. I live just down the road from here and when cars come around that corner, they're on two wheels. When they pass my house, they're hitting high gear. And putting that road in the middle of them curves, I've sat down there for hours looking. And Plain City is uh trying to put a senior uh community across the road from that. That's just like putting an Amis crossing on Indy five hundred. There's been five cars come down twenty-seven hundred north and missed the corner in the last year. I really think and I've talked to Nelson Holmes a little bit about it, instead of putting that crossing in the middle of that. And it's not laid out like that anyway. It's more uh east-west of there. They need to get that either right on the corner so you can see people coming both ways. The way it is, it's just offset and you can sit there and you cannot see the cars coming both ways. And so all we need is some senior citizen like me to pull out on that road and somebody coming ninety mile an hour down the road and turning the corner and killing somebody. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Michelle Roy Lance and I live in Far West and I would be directly affected by the um proposal, A. Just a couple of concerns. I know there was a lot that was raised last time in the meeting. Number one, the the road entering, it looks like there's only that one, maybe two that would initially be in with the sub. So I'm concerned about that. Uh my other question is, is this going to be a part of Plain City or is this a part of Far West? So.
Weber County. That's why you're here tonight rather than in.
So is that? Is that how it's going to remain in the future? Because I.
That depends on the cities, whether they would want to annex this development to their annexation zone or not. And I think that that's been pretty well vetted up to this point, but that doesn't mean that it won't happen in the future.
Thanks. Um I have a lot of neighbors and friends that would have liked to have been here tonight, but weren't able to due to health concerns or conflicts and there, that was one of their big concerns with it both. It doesn't fit in the general plan for Plain City or for Far West and majority of residents are against it. So it feels like it's like kind of going through the back door a little bit to come and get approval to start the development and then future force either of the cities to end it. And um I feel like it will negatively impact the surrounding properties. Um is there, do we have access to this information? Because the flyer we got in the mail said that it was to talk about a rezone. And when I looked up the information online, it was like nothing like what's being shown here tonight. So if that was, if we could be, if that would be made available, I would appreciate that and we could see.
The the rezone was already accomplished. It's almost a year ago. And um and so now this is for the development is what you're seeing tonight. This is the subdivision itself.
And is that is that available online? Is that something we can go on and see?
It is. It's all online right now. Afterwards, we can point you in the direction to the website if you would like.
Okay. So just a last, a last question is, so if I'm looking at it right, then all the property along the east side, is that single family dwellings, what do you have? Right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close public.
I'll make that motion, Chair.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor of closing public hearing?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. We are now out of public hearing and on to discussion. So Commissioners, any more, I I guess what we should do is probably let uh get staff and and the applicant to address some of the concerns that were brought up. And um if you'd be so kind, appreciate that.
So I heard, I guess I heard three three main concerns. Um um Brayden talked a little bit about a bait and switch, and I guess that's kind of in the eye of the beholder. So I'm not sure exactly without some detail on how to address that one. This plan seems very consistent with what we proposed initially. Um but he did raise a good point in terms of um elevation changes from those homes that are located over, and it was similar to what Michelle asked about as well. So those are all single family detached homes on the farthest east portion of the property. And then if you, uh Steve, I don't know if you have access to to this, but there's an open space plan exhibit H. Do you have that all? Sorry, that's which one's five? Um I don't think it was in the slides that you prepared, but if you have, if you have like the actual print off of the um of the of the of the NBA, of the development agreement.
Here's G.
It shows exhibit H. And so if you, if if you look at exhibit H.
We really need page numbers. I've got this thing so out of order. Hey, there you go.
Exhibit, yeah, exhibit H, so that's.
You're talking about the open space plan.
This one?
Yeah, the open space plan, uh a couple. No, sorry, a couple pages before that. It's page one, exhibit H.
Oh, page seven. I'm on seven.
Yeah, if you flip to page one, there's a lot of detail over here.
Hey, I found it.
Okay.
That seminar paid off.
This is probably the best exhibit that just kind of.
Seventy-five of eighty-nine, Steve.
So it's down towards the gray gray bottoms, Steve, like the last two pages of the did you like the last two pages of the application?
So much crap.
Stuff flying everywhere. Sorry about that. Um so so in terms of, in terms of what's directly located at that one or two, if you wanted to stick with that one, that one probably. Anyway, I guess the the point is um there are two places that touch existing development or are developed or by existing development that's not currently ours. And that is is currently located right now on the farthest northeast, um sorry, northwest portion of the property. There's an existing subdivision there. And so the lots that we put directly adjacent to that are the same size lots. I think they're fifteen, eighteen thousand square foot lots in the right hand. So our lots to the south. Um if I if I can just show you here, I don't know if that makes sense, Steve, but if this subdivision is existing right here and you have lots that are the similar size uh locally in this part. And then it's this like uh like like Brayden was just talking about, it's all of those homes that are in Far West on the east of the project. Um I would say almost maybe a little further than north of then halfway up is is there's existing homes on the on the east side of that of that canal. And so we have actually identified outside of the canal. So the canal is probably, I would guess the width of the canal is maybe, I don't have it right offhand, but I would guess it's probably twenty-five feet. And that's not our property. And so then as you come onto our property, that's where you've identified that that exit right there, Steve has up. So that's 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 an additional open space in addition to the canal, the backs um of those homes. We've got that open space as well as a trail that's planned along there. Those canals usually become great locations for trails. They're long, they're wide, there's no traffic interruption. Uh and so we'll put a big trail there and provide a great opportunity for people and moms and whatever kids to jump on the bike and ride and not be next to the road. Um and so we've tried to think through that. Um so that's the second thing that we've done. We've got the canal, we've got that open space that's planned there. And then lastly, those homes per the county's approval, um last fall, they have to be large lots. They have to be lots that were similar in size to those existing homes in there. So that was kind of the third measure that we've taken. And to address the elevation changes, I mean, again, I hope that addresses some of it. There's there's two fences on either side of the canal. Um we will all likely all of those folks along the back there will have their own six foot privacy fence uh that will then go into that open space. There'll be trees and other things that have those. So hopefully with the combination of those several things, um there's sufficient screenings time because as big impact change is hard, no matter what you do. Um but we've tried to try to be mindful of some of those concerns and press this.
Excuse me, did you say there'd be a six foot fence?
Yeah, on the, so there's already two, two six foot fences there that are right now on either side of the canal. And then we we have that open space that's, I would guess that open space is probably another fifty feet or so. And then on the backs of the homes, that row of homes that's right there, they'll have their own six foot wedge. Um so you'll have, you know, chain link, a chain link coming to now, open space, then uh then a six foot fence.
The elevation is is which which subdivision? The elevation is, is which, which subdivision is, is on top of the hill?
I, I think.
Chair.
Paddle line. Thank, thank you. Okay. Would you like to address any of that?
Uh. I don't, I don't know. It would be hard for us to commit to doing the single level there. I don't know if that makes sense. I would, I would guess that by the backs of those fences with our, you know, canal. Actually, I probably shouldn't.
Okay.
But I would guess that there's a significant. We've tried to be mindful of that. Um, oh, sorry. I, let's see. There was um, adjacency of uses, privacy, open space and trail. We talked about that. The connection, um, Miles brought up the connection at twenty-six hundred north. Um, we've spent a long time trying to think about how to be safe here. Um, and we've, we've done a traffic study and we've also submitted that to DVO. So we've had uh, fairly lengthy conversations with UDOT to get their feedback to make sure we weren't doing anything silly. Um, there's not a great solution. I'll be totally honest. Kind of a rough place to, um, and not having the plan up. Um, if, if you look at the S curve, there are two radiuses that are there. And we've tried to put that connection right in the middle of those two radiuses. So diversity coming in and out of that location will have as much distance as they can looking to, I guess, to the east, to the west, as well as to the east. If you put it on the curve, um, our traffic engineers and UDOT says that that's not as ideal. So putting it on that tangent right in the middle as much as you possibly can is the biggest issue. Um, I would see over time that intersection probably be coming a ride in, ride out. I could see that happening. That will entirely be UDOT's call. But the next connection up that you'll see into our subdivision, that will eventually be a lighted intersection. And so that's probably going to be the, the biggest uh, traffic mitigation device that's going to happen out there is that signal of this slow traffic. Which is going to be in a notice to people over there, but hopefully it will make it significant. Um, as that occurs, because you will have a significant amount of north south traffic here, which is. There will be a lot of cars that will use that. At twenty-eight, twenty-eight fifty uh, is where, is, is the extension, twenty-eight fifty is the extension of your subdivision and that goes very far. But there'll be a lot of north south traffic there that's used. But those were the things that I heard. Um, um, the adjacency of uses, connection of twenty-six hundred north. And then um, development on the east side, um, how we're trying to mitigate the impact of that. I have a little answer to the question. Anything else?
Commissioners, I just, I feel there was a couple more. I mean, you did a great job. But I, I want to talk a little bit about the Plain City general plan.
Yeah.
That was brought up.
Yes.
I, I studied the Plain City's general plan extensively when this rezone come through. Plain City's general plan would allow for almost a thousand units here. If it would have went through the zoning they have, plus they put in their residential overlay zone. Um. So I, I think this is a great, I made this comment before, this is a great. And that's just coming in without any amenities. I mean, if you did this whole thing in third acre lots, you're, you're seven hundred and, what do you got? Two hundred and thirty-eight acres here, times that by three. We're talking. Almost seven hundred and thirty units, seven hundred and forty units.
With roads and some of that in five years. Yeah, of course.
Or, or even seven hundred. So I mean, with the amenities that's being brought to the table that is going to benefit the surrounding community. If we got to give them twenty-five more units to get them parks that they're going to put in at their cost, I, I support it. Um, when I look at, so I, I just did some look on the GeoGizmo, considering that east boundary. So the far west side's third acre lots, fifteen thousand square foot lots along there. Um, you're proposing twelve thousand square foot lots, twelve, R one twelve, what's that? Twelve thousand five hundred square foot lots. But we're also in addition to that, you're putting a buffer, you're putting a trail. It looks like in between those two subdivisions, far west owns some property that looks like maybe one day will be a park. Hopefully you're on the other side of the canal in that second subdivision. There's about four acres owned by Far West City. That hopefully, you know, that can tie all together and tie the big park in the center of JDC with a smaller park and, you know, bring it all together, make it, make it beneficial for the area. Um, so I, I disagree with the comment that it, that it doesn't follow the, I, I can't speak to Far West general plan. I, I didn't research that. I, I researched Plain City, so maybe it doesn't follow Far West as well. Um. You know, the, the road concerns. I agree with Miles. That's a horrible, horrible stretch of road, but I don't know what the fix is. When you look up into Far West and you look at where Mountain West Meadows ties in. And the intersection by the New Junior High, I mean, that whole area right there is, is kind of a nightmare and, and I agree. I, I mean, it's up to UDOT, that's a state road, but. Before UDOT does any improvements, they look at, they look at crash numbers and they look at travel uses. So the, the more that comes, maybe that'll prompt UDOT into doing something in the areas sooner. Um. And then the third one was. Yeah, and I think Liam did a good job, but as far as noticing, I mean, I, I believe we met the noticing requirements. I also, you know, this has all been available on the county's website, on the county's planning website. It actually was available there prior to when we actually got the packets as planning commission. I think that was like Wednesday or Thursday of last week is when I. You can get on the Utah Public Notice website and anytime that something's put on there, it'll send you an email. And, and follow it from there. That's where I seen it before I even seen the notice of our meeting. Um, that was given to us as commissioners, so. I would hope that the, that the noticing was out there and from what I seen it was, so.
Um, yeah, I can, I can attest to that. Uh, we did send out postcard notices. Uh, we also. Put notices on the state notice website and on our own website. They sent out postcards that included uh, links to the project. It also included my information. I did have one person call and request. Um, that I send them my packet, which I, which I did, so.
Steve, was, so there was a statement that the notice was misleading or incorrect. Is that true?
No, uh, I'll tell you what I noticed.
I got the numbers.
It said that the Western Weaver Planning Commission will hold a public hearing. On September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two to consider a zoning development agreement associated with the rezoning. Of approximately two hundred and forty-two acres located at twenty-eight seventy-five west, twenty-six hundred north, and then it cites the zones.
So associated with the rezone. So she's misunderstood. Okay.
Yes, the, uh, development agreement associated with the rezoning, I think. Um. A lot of people think that this is.
That is a rezoning rather than associated. And then when, how much notice did they have?
Uh, we send out a postcard to property owners within five hundred feet. Um, we send that ten days before. So kind of hard for us to control when that, when that postcard gets to them, but. Um, yeah, we always encourage people to call us anytime and also, as you guys know, it's always good to be. Uh, to be at these meetings or watch the, the, the agendas and to come and participate, so.
Okay. Thank you, Steve, for addressing that.
Funding commissioners, it's also worth noting for the public who are here that this isn't the end. Uh, the county commission has to make a final decision on the project. Um, and so uh, members of the public who are interested and who want to express concern to the county commission, um, should be watching the county commission agendas. County commission is not obligated under the ordinance to hold a public hearing, even though they often do, but those hearings aren't usually noticed the same way the planning commission meeting is noticed. Um, we just stick with what the state code says regarding the first public hearing. So. Uh, for my encouragement to the public, anyone who's listening or those who aren't to spread the, or anyone who's listening to spread the word, kind of the county commission meeting if they uh, want to interface with the county commission. At that time.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioners, any, any uh? Comments or questions?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just have a, a comment. Uh. You know, uh, loo- loo- looking at this development. And looking at a development that might be in Syracuse. I mean, this is a beautiful development here. Uh. It's not a checkerboard. I think that. It brings a lot of amenities along with the, I think, a pretty classy layout. And uh, I think uh, wh- when I sit up here, I, I, I look at this as, is this a place where I would bundle it? And I think that it is. I think that it's in a good location. I, I know the issues about the travel and, and the roads up there. I go up twenty-six hundred quite often. I live in Warren. And you don't need a passport to come down there. Uh, but it, it, it just is, I, I feel like that this is the kind of development when you've got this much property. That you can make a very beautiful development without having. A checkerboard because checkerboards, uh. I went over to visit a friend in Syracuse a few years ago and uh. I spent about thirty-five minutes with him on my cell phone to find the place. And so I, I just want to congratulate uh, Nelson Holmes and uh, and uh, the folks that did the presentation tonight because. I just felt like that this is just something, a place where I'd like to live. So thank you for that.
And, and I'd like to thank the public uh, for showing up, those of you that did. Um, it's important and it's, it's important to be involved. And um. This is pretty typical to what we see on these kind of things. Um, you know, it, it's, it's new, it's big. And. It's growth. It's the future. Um, the subdivision itself with the master plan development, as I indicated earlier, works real well on this particular location. And um, but, but it's important for people to, to come out and voice their opinion, get on the record and be part of the process. So I commend you for coming out tonight and thanks for doing that. And on that note, and Wes commissioners, you have anything else?
Um. Chair, sorry, I got one more thing. I, I feel we skipped over, cause Michelle's comment towards that we're forcing annexation. I, I don't think we ever forced annexation. We put it in there that the, that this won't object to going into a neighboring city. I mean, as I look at this as, i- if I lived in Plain City or in, in Far West and I knew this was coming and I knew it was going to be an amenity to my direct area or my city. I would kind of push my city to want to take this. So I just did another rough number and I said, I'm not a mathematician, but. You know, cities are funded off of property taxes, building permit fees, impact fees. And if you took a fifteen thousand dollar impact or a building permit impact fee on this, seven hundred and twenty-five units, you're talking eleven million dollars. In, in funding to go into your, to your local communities, if the community's taking. Right now it's going to go into the county and the county, you know, they're going to. You know, if this moves forward and it develops, the county's going to maintain it. Um, I think it would be better suited in one of the cities, but you know what? As part of this process. Correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, you had to meet with Far West, you had to meet with Plain City and discuss this, and neither one of them. Really wanted to move on it. And, and so under your right is, is the property still sitting in Western Lever County and. To Commissioner or to Chair Verro's point, this is a large chunk of ground. Um. And I, and I do agree it, it fits the area. Um. Based on, you know, the amenities that are going to come with that. So just kind of to address the comment, nothing's being forced annex or, or de-annex or, or whatever. It's, it's. Being addressed in the community that the property resides in now, so.
Chair.
Sure.
Um, there were some uh, online comments that were sent to us and I just wanted to address some of their concerns. Um, there was a concern that uh. The underlying emotion I got emails is that we're building tiny homes that are going to attract. That was, I, I, I don't know if that's kind of. The emails. Um, and I, I haven't heard. Comments here tonight, but these, these homes will be new and, and quite nice. I live in a community where we had uproar. Um, it's one of the reasons I'm up here because they wanted to put townhomes in and. In the end, it has been a great asset to our community. It's right. It directly affected us um, as far as the building, but in the end we were able to see, we got pickleball out of it. We got. We did get more traffic that is going to um. Force some better roads. And we also are um, getting better developments as far as uh, restaurants, finally restaurants that are closed or opening, because now they've got group shops to support the businesses. So. Um. These, these homes will be affordable possibly to a school teacher or baby. I think they will be actually. Even you taught cottage and you taught townhome, these are expensive properties when they're new. And I'm hoping that they will be affordable to our public servants, but they aren't going to be homeless people off the street. They won't. I don't think those. For these properties. So it's good to keep that into perspective. These are the people that will be working in your community. You can't have a restaurant. Uh, you can't have a school if you don't have school. Riding that housing is very essential and I, I am, there was also some undertones that. Uh, the developer was doing this strictly for the money. Well, everyone works for money. I, I don't think they're doing this for free, but I think they have made significant. Um. Uh. Adjustments to allow. A buffer. The existing residents and the new community. Um. And, and I appreciate that thought. It, development is painful. Um, but I hope that in the end this will be, that everyone will see that the asset of this community, but it is difficult. Um, so I, I do think that developers had. Um, if they didn't, we have worked really hard as a. To um, the standards that we'd like. Dedicate as much open space and to build parks. We cannot do that as a county. We need developers to do it. Otherwise we don't have amenities. So I, I appreciate these are a part of it. And quite honestly, we would not approve this without the forty percent space. That is what we're requiring.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner. Anything else, commissioners? All right. I'll ask for a motion. On uh, ZDA twenty twenty-two zero four, please.
I don't make any of the motions. Okay, with it's, what's in the packet because that's.
Make your motion.
Okay.
Now.
We'll find out. Um. Motion, when we approve, um. Goodness. Where is the name? Oh, here it is. It's on the second line. Okay. Motion to approve ZDA twenty twenty-two dash four, uh, a positive recommendation based on staff recommendations, which are provisioned to be added to the agreement that requires. The HOA to be professionally managed. Definitions will be added or modified in the agreement as required, requested by the, by planning staff and the county attorney. Edits that implement the commission's intent regarding. Be made to the draft agreement as directed by the planning staff in the county. Before the agreement is considered by the county commission. This recommendation is based on the following findings. The proposal will not deteriorate the environment of the general area so as to inevitably affect surrounding properties and uses. The agreement was considered by the legislative body in accordance with chapter one oh two dash six of the county land code.
Very good. Okay. I have a motion. I'll ask for a second. Motion, no, sir. Commissioner McCormick. Commissioner Andrea, Commissioner Wickern.
Hi.
Commissioner Novell.
Hi.
Commissioner Clance.
Hi.
Commissioner Edwards.
Hi.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you very much. That was a good discussion. Yeah, and I think somebody forgot to pay the, the air conditioning bill. All right.
We talked about them turning the air on at the night meetings.
Sorry, I forgot to pay that bill. I'll, I'll try and take care of it tomorrow.
June, pay the bill. Don't leave it up to him. We can trust you. All right. Public comment for items not on tonight's agenda. Okay. I don't see any of that. All right. We'll move on to the next item. Item seven, remarks from the planning commissioners. Commissioners, please.
I got just one. Charlie, you look a lot better now you shaved that beard off. I'm so glad the general plan's done so you could, you know, fleet that up a little bit.
Do I look handsome?
You, you, a lot better than one. You, you, a lot better than what it was before. It wouldn't go that far, Charlie. You know.
Yeah, I've got mixed, uh, I've got mixed, uh, feelings, uh, mixed remarks about it. Some people wishing it was still there and other people super glad it's gone. And then I got June when I walked in said, excuse me, can I help? Oh, Charlie.
Well, well, I guess the only person that really matters is your significant other. So.
She liked it.
All right, there you go.
I liked it the way it was. Yeah, I do too.
She like.
On you, you can pull it up.
Mountain man, we'll start calling him mountain man Charlie.
Those that don't have, that aren't able to grow, that are jealous.
I, I am.
I'm one of them.
I am looking for something new to protest. So, you know, I can grow it back.
All right. Okay, well, we, I think any, any, any other Commissioners.
Yeah, I've got something. Uh, as I was walking out the door, the mail came today. And, uh, right on the front of the page that says, uh, something like, uh, the valley consider is considering incorporation. So, uh, so do we know anything?
We know, we know a little bit. Um, there are some different meetings that are coming down the pike. If not, maybe something going on tonight. I can't remember which night this week there. But, uh, yeah, they're, they're looking at getting a ballot initiative on, not this next, uh, ballot, but, uh, I, yeah, it'll, well, I think it'll be the next November.
Have they done a study?
They're working on asking for that study. Um, and so they're really just kind of trying to pool the resources and figure out who's going to be responsible for what. Uh, before they, they put all that together. They do have a better tax base than Western Weber has. And so I suspect that finance study is going to come back. Much more positively, uh, than it was for Western Weber. The question for them after that is, is that really what they want? And if it is what they want, what's the boundary? Is it the whole valley or is it just part of it? Um, there's a lot of what's going on up there as we execute the, uh, general plan that was adopted in twenty sixteen and hasn't been changed since twenty sixteen. There's a lot of dissent coming down the pipeline, uh, because a lot of that execution involves acknowledging a lot of rights that exist out there. Uh, or up there that, uh, are not yet built. And folks seem to think that, uh, the county commission should have the ability to deny those rights, um, which technically the county commission does. Uh, but a conservative commission won't usually do that. We did it once back in nineteen ninety eight up in the valley. And so I don't think you'll see the county commission consider that again. I'd be a little bit surprised to see what happens if they do incorporate. I mean, they've got to create a government. Not that point, they've got to run, um, public financing and budgeting. And do they actually have enough to pay for the amount of roads alone that they have up there? Right, right now, they cost the county seven times as much as Western Weaver does.
Well, the interesting thing about that is, do people really think that they can put more, more or less pressure on people that they know than people that they may not know as well? And what I mean by that is the two different governments, they'll elect people that they know better. But are they willing to put the same amount of pressure on them as they're willing to put on the people that they may not know as well? And the problem to all of that pressure putting is the cost. And, and so are you really in the end, at the end of the day, going to get anything better, a better product than you have currently? So that's up to them.
So are they looking, because I've heard rumor that they were looking at creating their own county. Is this, to create a county or just a municipality?
I, I think they chased down those leads and found that it's not very, uh, easy to do. Um, and so this is kind of the second.
So they're creating a city essentially.
Yeah.
So it would be Huntsville in the middle and everything else around it is a city, depending on what their boundaries would be.
Something like that. Yeah. Depending on the boundaries are, it may just be, it may just start over in the Eden area and then expand from there.
But I mean, financially, they'd have to take ski resorts because that's their tax base up there, right?
Yeah, well.
Powder Mountain is in part of that county, right?
Uh, it, Powder Mountain, part of Powder, well, the, the cash registers in Powder Mountain are. And so that might be.
We get the benefit of it, yeah.
Uh, but when I was working for Morgan County, Snow Basin made it very clear that if, uh, any of the entities in Morgan County wanted to annex or incorporate Snow Basin. They would rush to incorporate themselves.
Hold themselves.
And so I'd be a little surprised if that answer is not the same for the valley floor.
So, uh, in a situation like that, um, where that is, isn't that leased property or is that owned property? I mean, I was thinking that that was all government or, you know, state or federal property. So.
Snow Basin is owned property. It was actually active Congress, Earl Holdings swapped land that he owned in a different area, uh, for this public land. So it used to be forest service property. It's now Snow Basin Park. Okay. There's a very small portion of the resort, uh, or skeeble area that's still, uh, for service, but it's an island within Earl Holdings empire.
Okay. All right. Okay. Yeah. Anything else, Commissioners?
Hey, it's up to you, Charlie. You're the director.
Sorry, I've got nothing to report. Thank you.
Oh, all right.
And Liam. Yeah, you don't want to. No comment. All right. It's been thinking of a comeback forever. So.
You know, thank, thank you, uh, both and. For, you know, putting that information out there about that development agreement. Really appreciate that, uh, Liam.
Can see.
Thank you very much. All right.
All entertaining motion to adjourn.
Before we do that really quick. Just sorry. Are we meeting next week as well?
No.
No, it's on my calendar. So I want to make.
Motion to adjourn.
I already asked for it. Second. All right. Motion to adjourn.
Hi.
We're done.
It's a stand up and. That's what that word would change.